The zoning board of adjustment of the township of Bluefield is now in session for the regular meeting of July 8th, 2021. Notice, the time, date, location, and agenda of this meeting to the extent then known, was provided at least 48 hours prior to commencing this meeting in the following manner pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 231 of well 1975, also known as the open public meetings Act 1. By posting such notice on the bulletin board of municipal little in 2, by mailing such notice to the offices of the independent press, Bluefield Life and the Star Legend. Due to the bond up on pandemic and in effort to get first, this meeting will be held remotely. The public is invited to attend by accessing the meeting via telephone or video link, the meeting will also be reviewing on Channel 35 Comcast, Channel 30 Verizon, or by streaming live on Facebook or the township website www.bluefieldtownshipnewjersey.com. Public is invited to participate via accessing website link or call and telephone number. The meeting ID is 869-50663650, pass code 0524. If you'd like to view any of the materials, or have any questions, please contact the board secretary, Nococa Sensa, and casenza@bluefildtownshipnewjersey.com, or call at Ms. Casenza, please call for it.
Okay, I just want to make a quick clarification, Chairman. I think I made a mistake. If I remember correctly, I believe we were supposed to have a discussion of the in-person meetings in August. I put it on for this one, for this agenda, but wasn't it August?
We can talk about it. It's all right.
Okay, okay. All right, I'm gonna take roll. Ms. Brown?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Balnicki?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Present.
Mr. Stivers?
Present.
Ms. Hilaire?
Present.
Chairman Machowski?
Here.
For the record, Ms. Tolliver, as of right now, is absent, and also present is the board engineer, Anthony Marucci, the board attorney, Mike Rubin, and the board planner, George Williams from Nishleen.
Oh, there he is. Hi, George. Good evening, Mr. Rubin and everybody. Good evening. That brings us to item 3, item 2, communications. We have no minutes. We have one communication from the firm Castiel Pometo, who requested an adjournment of 62 Mills Street to August 19th, waiting on time constraints. Questioning for required and discussion board. Here are no one may have a motion to adjourn 62 Mills Street to August 19th, please.
So moved.
No further. Second, Mr. Balnicki, what was it? Who was that?
Mr. Prince?
Who was second? No. Mr. Prince seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I hear no one opposed. 62 Mills Street, dated 19 August 19th. Notice required, is there?
If I may for clarity, it wasn't I who's second, it was someone else.
Oh, I apologize.
I think it was, it was.
Oh, Mr. Wagner.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Was there any member of the public here regarding 62 Mills Street? I hear no one?
No.
All right, that brings us to resolutions. Board, Mr. Rubin distributed three resolutions for oralizing past actions taken by this board for your review and comment. And these resolutions are in draft, so if you'll read the first one for us, Ms. Casenza.
Sure.
Please.
Resolution in the matter of the application of Jamie Pyro and Kristen Pyro for variances pursuant to NJSA 40:55D-70C for the construction of a deck and patio in a side yard, the patio and a shed intruding into the required side yard setback, the size of the shed, the height of a fence in a side yard, and for front yard parking and the lack of a garage, authorizing the illegal construction of the deck, patio, and shed, and the widening of the driveway accessory to a single-family dwelling at property located at 50 Barber Street, Block 827, Lot 21.
Any discussion, board? Here are no one? May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
This could be.
I don't want to move that, Mr. Chairman.
Who was that? Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Johnson.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I will second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Prince seconds. Please call the board.
Okay. Vice Chairman Balnicki?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Stivers?
Yes.
Resolution.
Resolution is approved.
Yeah.
May we have this second one, please?
Resolution in the matter of the application of 59 Dodge LLC for amended preliminary and final site plan approval following settlement of a challenge to a previously approved 24-unit multifamily dwelling and conditional use variance pursuant to NJSA 40:55D-70D3, a variance pursuant to NJSA 40:55D-70C for excessive lot coverage and design waivers for the size of compact parking stalls and the width of drive aisles to permit the expansion and conversion of a vacant two-story bank building for use as a 17-unit multifamily dwelling with ground floor commercial space at property located at 59 Dodge Street, Block 94, lots 27, 28, 30, and 31.
Board, any discussion, comments? Anyone? Here are no one? May I have a motion to approve the 59 Dodge Street resolution, please?
So moved.
Mr. Balnicki moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Johnson seconds. Please call the board.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Balnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Stivers?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Chairman Machowski?
Yes.
Resolution is approved, and Ms. Casenza, please read the last one.
Okay. Resolution in the matter of the application of Washington Developers LLC for preliminary and final site plan approval, a use variance pursuant to NJSA 40:55D-70D1, a density variance pursuant to NJSA 40:55D-70D5, variances pursuant to NJSA 40:55D-70C for an existing nonconforming front yard setback, and for existing nonconforming rear and side yard setbacks of a detached garage to permit the conversion of a two-family dwelling into a three-family dwelling in the R1B Single Family Residential District at property located at 145 Washington Street, Block 224, Lot 5.
Any discussion, board? Anyone? Comments? Corrections? No one? Here are no one? I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the Washington Developers LLC.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Wagner moves it. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Prince seconds. Please call the board, Ms. Casenza.
Okay, Mr. Balnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Stivers?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Chairman Machowski?
Yes. Resolution is approved.
All right. Okay, board, that brings us to item 3, discussion regarding resuming in-person meetings. I'd like to find it F on the board if we are comfortable meeting again in person, and I'm gonna suggest start in October rather than, your agenda says September, but I'm gonna say, let's consider October. Does everyone feel safe and secure, and has everyone had their vaccinations? Is there any, anyone have, are there any comments regarding that? Comfortable and safe. Objection to meeting. Who was that? I couldn't hear you. Say it again, please. It's Doug. I said I'm comfortable and safe. Okay.
Yeah, I am comfortable with September or October, so if the consensus is October, I'm fine with that.
Yep, sitting here.
What's the date in October we're looking at?
Mike, do you have that in front of you? I don't have my schedule.
I do. It is October 7th.
October 7th, okay. Never mind, Mike.
So if there are objections, we will aim to resume meeting in public council chambers on October 7th. Anyone have anything to say about that?
Now, do you want me to put it on again in September, or are we just gonna go with, just to make sure? It's up to you.
Well, it's come with our, plan will be for October unless there's some change in the situation.
Okay.
If there's more executive orders.
Okay. Then we can bring it back up again.
And we bring that up again.
Okay.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, I think we agreed that a hybrid situation was problematic, and so it's one or the other, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, so this will be all in-person, and also want to, I'm suggesting October to make sure the public is comfortable as well, because we're looking at some resuming an application that typically has more than 100 people attending, so there'll be quite a crowd. And we haven't finished Hazelwood, it's down a year and a half now since the last time we heard it.
And we also have that 1065 Broad Street, which is also gonna be a big application.
Yes. Yes. All right, so aim for October.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And so, you'll have to let the over applicants know to have the proper notice. Thank you, board. Item 4 is upcoming applications to consider for review by the board's professional planner or the board's traffic expert. There are no such applications to consider this evening, board, so that brings us to old business. Old business, item 5A is the application of Canwell and Armita Singh Varma as applicants, and Armita Singh Varma as owner for a use variance. waiver of site plan requirements, any such other relief was made required from zone warrant, township of Bluefield, to convert the first floor of an existing building to residential use and divide the second floor to create two apartments, a neighborhood business B2 zone on the premises known as map 12, block 271, lot 7 better known as 401 Franklin Street, and let me state for the record that I was not in attendance for the previous hearing on this matter, however, I have the entire video deployed that was made by the township's television station, and so I am qualified to vote. Any other, any questions? Anyone? All right, so Mr. Stanton Brogio is representing the applicant. Mr. Stanton, why don't you introduce the application, if you want to summarize, that's perfectly okay, otherwise then call your next witness.
Sure, I'll just briefly refresh everybody's recollection. The applicant owner was a practicing dentist at the location on the first floor for 25 or so years. She's now retiring. After the applicant testified, Mr. Corso began, or pretty much completed his testimony about the interior revisions to the home and also walked us around the site plan. If you recall, there was a discussion near the end of the meeting, as it got to later hours, about the propriety of having a fence as a condition between the subject property and the property directly to the north, which is the Bluefield State Concealed House. And I can recall my client, but I represent that he had a conversation with that property owner who indicated, and this is sort of hearsay, but it was reduced to writing that Nick Matola, the owner of the adjacent property, preferred that there not be a fence in school between the two lots.
Mr. Stanton Brogio did give me a copy of that letter for the file, just for everyone's knowledge.
Do we have to mark that as evidence, Mr. Rubin?
Yeah, I think that could be, I think that's gonna have to give it, go up to A4.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Anyway, and just to remind everybody, this is a D3 application, we're in a B2 zone. I confess the initial taglet was a straight D1 variance, but as you all know, your planner and attorney will counsel you. The focus under the Coventry Square decision of the board on a conditional use application where a condition is not met, which in this case essentially residential apartments are not permitted on the first floor is the primary or sole condition not met, that your focus is on how serious that failure to meet that condition is, and are there any underlying factors that would substantiate your granting the application despite not meeting that condition? Anyway, that's about it. I think Mr. Corso basically concluded his direct testimony, and I think is available for questioning by the board of public.
All right, Mr. Corso, I believe is still under oath, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, board, questions for Mr. Corso?
Mr. Chairman, I do.
Go ahead, Mr. Prince.
Mr. Corso, I hear and understand everyone seemed to have issues with putting up a fence, and I can understand that, but do you think that for the safety or for the privacy of the potential tenants, that some sort of barrier should be there to indicate the difference between the parking lines, since it's, nothing is there? I mean, do you feel as if some, something should be put there, or for nothing, that will, you know, secure the privacy, at least the protection of the property of those who, vehicles of those who will be parking there?
I don't believe that's necessary, that the building has been occupied as, if there was, is one residence that is existing there and occupied, it has been, and I don't think that there's any problem now with that. And the fence, as Mr. Marucci pointed out, would be a barrier to somebody negotiating in parking spaces. In my opinion, I think it's best to that.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Corso.
Mr. Balnicki.
Mr. Corso, at A1, where the parking lot is, okay, where everybody was talking about a proposed fence, I'm wondering if the, how far up does the asphalt in the parking lot come to the line, to the property line?
Okay, can I share the screen? Nicole?
You should be able to.
Okay.
Yep.
I think the...
Did I quote that one before?
Yeah, we talked about this previously.
So this was A1, correct? Cause A2 and A3 were photos, if I remember correctly.
A1 are the three plans that we submitted, the paper copies of. You can see here that the property line is about two and a half feet from the garage, and about, almost eight feet from the house, and there's actually more room to the existing divider. There's 10 feet from the house to the divider, so if you look at the...
God bless.
One of the photos that I presented last time, this one, you can see, this is the divider here, which is 10 feet from the house, and so the property line is like right between where the tire of this truck is, and where the paving, it's in the middle there, where the paving changes. I don't have a picture of the back, but...
Okay, now, with this picture, I'm just thinking out loud here, everybody was saying a fence and, you know, that type of thing, and you're proposing without a fence, what I'm suggesting is, what about a, just a solid white line from, say, the front tire of the food truck there, all the way back, you know, past the telephone pole, to delineate where the property is?
And where their parking space is at, and that's a very good idea.
You know, just something like that, just, as unobtrusive as it can be, you know what I mean, but a white line, people will see it.
I agree that that's a good idea.
Okay, since I think on the other side of this lot too, that's where the parking spot's gonna be, and they're gonna be obviously, you know, doing those white lines also.
Yeah, we're doing these lines, yes.
Yeah. Just to, just to ensure that everyone understands, that line has to be on the property line or on applicant's property, and indeed the head of those spaces, if the head of those spaces are on the owner's properties, because we can't impose any conditions that require them to do work on the adjacent property.
No, but we can reason with the owner, I know that the applicant...
But we can't make it a condition that you do that. We can, we can say you have to do it, but if you can't, you still have the right to an approval of the board. We can't make it a condition that is unfulfillable as a condition of approval, that is not within your power to fulfill. The line, I think, the line would have to be, I think, on the property line. Right, that's what I'm suggesting. Thank you. I just want to make sure everyone understands that. I'm suggesting, all right. It could be on the property line, or it could actually be a foot in on the applicant's property, or six inches, you know, that type of thing.
Yeah, we could, we could put a few inches in, so that it didn't go under the property.
I mean, I think if you pay it on the property line, that's fine. Okay. I think that what you want to do is you want to not intimidate people from walking in as far as they can after the space on the site. Right, okay, I understand what you're going. And using as much of that as they can, because they're, you know...
Mike?
You're gone, Mike.
All right, can we take down the share screen? Maybe I can see if he's there, or if he's having an issue. Oh yeah, he went blank.
The storm is having, a lot of people having internet issues because of the storm.
Our IT guy's saying there might be a lot of internet issues. Oh, Mike's calling me, hold on.
Yeah, maybe.
Hello? He lost power.
Wow, yeah.
Oh my.
Oh man.
That's a problem.
The whole neighborhood's out, the traffic lights are out. He has no power.
It was throwing a call, so I was worried about that.
Yep.
Maybe his mobile phone. We won't be able to see anything.
I was gonna say, you could try. Oh, he doesn't even have Wi-Fi.
But he could use his phone.
Right, that's the power.
Verizon, I'm just saying.
Yeah. He could use his phone.
He doesn't have Wi-Fi.
But if his phone is Verizon. John, get the car and go to the closest member's house.
Hopefully get the car and go to the closest member's house.
I believe Zip works on a mobile phone. Yeah, right. Yeah. You gotta have, gotta have a good plan.
Better go to Starbucks.
All right, hold on, let me just, I'm gonna talk to Mike and see what he wants to do here. I don't know, I don't know what, so what do you suggest?
And my apologies to the last applicant, getting on the agenda for Mike coming down Verizon, not the last applicant, yeah.
All right, so here's the situation, Chairman. Mike said it's up to you if you either A, wanna go on without him, or B, take a break for about 20 minutes, let him get home, or are you in the office? He, that's why he's in the office, because he never loses power in the office, but it happens, so do you want to take the break and see if he can go home and see if he has power there?
I mean, does he know if there's power at home?
He doesn't, and nobody's home, so he can't, he's not gonna know until he gets there.
Inform powers lost, if I haven't seen it, bro. Bluefield is next.
You broke up, what did you say?
All right, we will... Power is out in Cedar Grove also, I heard.
Power's out in Cedar Grove also, we heard.
Okay. So we'll give Mr. Rubin 20 minutes to get home. We'll resume the meeting at 7:45, and see what the situation is. It would be very difficult to carry on without Mr. Rubin, because he writes the resolutions.
All right, so we're gonna give you the time to get home. Hold on, one second.
Yeah, after you finish with him, I'm just trying to find out if Frank Miletto is with us.
I don't see him.
That's scary, up full.
Okay.
All right, we'll, let's take a break, we'll try to resume at 7:45, and...
We're gonna take a break.
Let us know what he finds out, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
You're on.
All right, it's 7:48 PM, the zoning board is back in session. Mr. Rubin in attendance once again. We had a brief interruption, there are three power alleges in Caldwell, and that affected the connectivity, Mr. Rubin. So, a brief announcement before continuing, 24 Broad Street had been adjourned to this meeting this evening, but it was discovered that there was an error on the tax sector's part in identifying properties that needed to be noticed, properties within 200 feet of 224 Broad Street, and because of that, it's, 224 Broad Street is not on this evening's agenda, and instead, 224 Broad Street will have to re-invest, we don't know what that date is yet.
Correct.
But everyone within the scene will receive notice as well as newspapers, and if anyone has any questions regarding the date, when it's determined, please contact the board secretary, Ms. Casenza. So if anyone is here for just for 224 Broad Street, you may go to bed.
I wish, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So resuming with 401 Franklin Street, Mr. Stanton Brogio was, I believe we were still working with Mr. Corso. Mr. Corso, please.
Go ahead, Mr. Stanton Brogio.
No, I think Mr. Corso was still fielding questions from the board, if any, and if none, of the public.
Any other questions, board, from Mr. Corso? Is there any member of the public with a question for Mr. Corso?
I don't see anybody standing raised, no, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Corso.
Thank you.
You can continue, Mr. Stanton Brogio.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, I had, my client had retained Mr. Frank Miletto as a professional planner to testify. He was present during the last hearing, apparently he has not logged on to this evening's meeting. I've tried to reach him by telephone and email, and have not received a response. I've discussed it with my client and Mr. Corso, and in the interest of brevity under these unusual conditions, the applicant would... Apparently he has not logged on to this evening's meeting. I've tried reaching by telephone and email and have not received a response. I've discussed it with my client and Mr. Corso, and in the interest of brevity under these unusual conditions, the applicant would waive the testimony of the planner so that we can proceed. I think the issue before you, on the condition that's not met, was adequately met during Mr. Corso's testimony, and so at this point I would rest our case.
Let me ask Mr. Rubin, is a planning testimony essential for our D3 bearings?
You're on mute, Mike.
I think that's the board's discretion, and we do have Mr. Williams here.
Alright. Just Santan Brocio, you realize that the board will be influenced by Mr. Williams' testimony on behalf of the board, and there will be no planning testimony on behalf of the applicant. If that's okay with you, it doesn't matter.
It's not a comfortable position for me to be in, although I did not read Mr. Williams' report to have much in a derogatory or negative about the application. Maybe I spoke too soon, is it conceivable that, well, I would reserve the right to rebut any of Mr. Williams' testimony, which I don't anticipate, just in case.
Alright, well, what we'll do is, after we hear from the board's experts, Mr. Marucci and Mr. Williams, after you hear from Mr. Williams, if you wish to have an adjournment, we give you an adjournment, or you can proceed both of you after we hear from Williams. I'll leave that up to you.
Thank you, that's fair, thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, so applicant has rested their case, and so I'd like to call the board's engineer, Mr. Marucci, to give us the benefit of your, or you please, Marucci.
Okay, do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just state your name for the record.
Anthony Marucci.
Thank you, Anthony.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, most of my concerns that I had outlined in my report dated April 26, 2021, have been addressed by Mr. Corso. The parking lot is there, and it's not changing, and at the last meeting I even made a comment that I was not in favor of putting a fence up between this property and the Bloomfield Steakhouse. Those two parking lots meet, and they work well together, both from a drainage standpoint. I do concur, the white line to kind of delineate the property line is fine. My other concern, Mr. Corso addresses, the fact that this building is going to be sprinkled, and, because I was concerned about that third floor bedroom, as long as it's sprinkled, that's fine, that meets the code. The only other comment I'll make is that when Mr. Corso brought the photographs out, that I believe it's, the building is gonna look much better without that brick front on the, where the office was. It's gonna look more, it's gonna look more residential, and I agree with that aesthetically. And in terms of traffic, there'll be actually, actually less traffic with this application, because with the office, you had patients coming probably every half an hour, now, now it's gonna be limited to just the residential tenants, so I have no problem with this application as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Marucci, were there questions for Mr. Marucci?
Mr. Marucci, do you, in your report, do you refer to a light pole, lighting plant block?
Again, Mr. Corso had testified that he's gonna have those lights shielded, both the one that's on the building and the one that's on the garage, so I'm okay with the lighting as presented.
Thank you.
Anyone else, questions for Mr. Marucci?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Mr. Marucci, yeah, just not to try and, not to belabor the point about the property line with the Bloomfield Steak and Seafood, but, and I know we need the applicants to actually chime in on this, but since the parking in the Bloomfield Steak and Seafood lot is head-in parking, is there a risk or any issue that you might see where people who have parked along that property line will actually use the driveway of 401 Franklin to leave the premises?
I don't know if I can answer that question, I have not experienced it, but I can tell you that both of these sites have existed for I don't know how many years, I mean, in this condition, and it has not been a problem. I've been in town a lot of years, and so has the Bloomfield Steakhouse, even before it was a Bloomfield Steakhouse, I believe it was called Proud Bears, it's been there for a long time, and I don't think there's ever been an issue with that.
Mr. Chairman, is it okay if I address that question to the applicants as well?
We can recall the applicant when we're done with Mr. Marucci.
Okay, alright, thank you. That's all I have.
Any member of the public? Any member of the public have a question?
I don't see anybody's hands.
Alright, here no member of the public?
And I don't see anybody's hands raised.
Who would you like to address the question to, Mr. Johnson?
To the applicants, I believe the Varmas, is that, did I get that name correct?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so since you have actually occupied 401 Franklin for a number of years, have there ever been issues or instances where Bloomfield Steak and Seafood customers from the business next door have used your driveway to exit?
No, sir, we've been there since 1989, and there actually has never been any issue before Proud Bears, as we're finishing around with the Bloomfield Steakhouse, there has never been any issue whatsoever. We actually have a very, very good relationship with every driver's next door, and they're very, very helpful to us, so never, never any issue.
Alright, thank you. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Alright. And there's no member of the public with a question for Mr. Marucci?
Not that I see. No.
Alright, you can hear from the board's planner, Mr. Williams, please.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I most certainly do.
State your name for the record, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners, applicant, and all, my name is George Whittle Williams, W-I-L-L-I-A-F-N-S, initiating group representing the Bloomfield Zoning Board of Adjustment.
We seem to be losing.
Are you okay, George, you there?
I'm good.
Okay, you can start.
Start, okay, alright, sorry, um, so-
Has he sworn in, Ms. Nicole?
Yes, I just swore him in.
Yeah.
Alright, you disappeared, Nicole.
I'm here.
I'm here.
Yeah, I can see you.
I, I can't see you, you disappeared.
Alright, can you still hear everybody?
Mr. Chairman, there's a screen, there's just-
Yeah, I see.
I just threw that.
You hear back, Mrs. Sinsen.
Yay!
Good job.
Okay.
Alright, sorry, Mr. Williams, please give us the analysis.
No, all too necessary, Mr. Chairman, again, good evening, everybody. I did have an opportunity to review this application for 401 Franklin Street, also identified municipal tax records in Block 271, Lot Number 7. As you've heard from the applicant and their expert, this is an application for a D3 use variance, which as the board knows is a conditional use variance, and specifically, they vary from the conditional use standard, which requires that the first floor of the building not be for residential use. As the board will recall, the issue of the use is not at question, the conditional uses are considered to be appropriate for the location in which they are found, but with standards, therefore where there's a deviation from the conditional use standard, the board is instructed to focus on that deviation specifically and not the use. In Bloomfield, as we all know, the multifamily definition is as follows, a building containing three or more dwelling units that share common horizontal, vertical separation, including garden apartments and townhouses. And so this particular use qualifies as a multifamily, and multifamilies are specifically permitted as conditional uses in the B2 Zone District. Since Mr. Miletto is not here, I will just read into the record the section of the code to which we are referring, and that's Section 315-39.8, and the conditions are as follows, all dwelling units shall be located above the ground floor, again, this is a condition, initial use standard that the applicant does not meet, and they're seeking relief from that standard. B, the ground floor shall be utilized for non-residential permitted use only, except no ground floor parking area is allowed. C, the residential density shall not exceed 25 dwellings per acre in a B2 Zone District. D, any building in a CBD zone with residential use must have a maximum height of four stories, that's not applicable in this particular application. E, combined parking requirements for all uses shall be met, and finally, F, any site plan approval shall be conditioned upon the filing of an application for amended site plan approval and any necessary variance should any change in floor use increase the required parking beyond the number of spaces approved by the board. So the applicant is seeking a relief from A and B, in my opinion, using the first floor or ground floor for residential use, and application has been made, and testimony offered by Mr. Corso about how he would treat the aesthetic of the building based upon that conversion, as well as what the interior of the building would look like, of course, from a planning perspective, the focus is really on, in my opinion, the aesthetic of the exterior and how it would fit into the context of the B2 Zone District as a multifamily with residential use on the ground floor. My memo includes a discussion, as it always does, about what the standards for relief are under the municipal land use law. Unfortunately, I neglected to add the D3, it only includes a D1. So let me just repeat what I said in my introductory comments, and that is, under municipal land use law, 4055-D3, the board is allowed to consider conditional use variances where an applicant deviates from any standard of the conditional use standards, and focus their deliberation only on that deviation. Again, this deviation is using the ground floor for residential. What's interesting is there is a court case, and Mr. Paul-
Hector Brocio.
Thank you. You saw me stumble there, that's good. The landmark court case is a Coventry Square Court case, and it gives instructions to the board that says the standard for relief is a bit different than the D1 use standard where it's a non-permitted use. In this case, the use is permitted with conditional use standards, and as I've mentioned already, the Coventry case also suggests that the board focus its attention and deliberation only on a deviation, not the use itself. In my opinion, the applicant has given testimony through Mr. Corso establishing how the building will be treated if he were to approve that deviation. I would add a few more comments, if the board is inclined to approve this D3 application, and that is certainly to comply with all of the recommendations from the Historic Preservation Commission, the memo or resolution from that commission was included in our packet, and that should be a condition of approval if the board is leaning towards approving this application. I mentioned the definition of multifamily already. Based on my analysis of the application, site and surrounding area, in my opinion, if the board were to approve this application with the conditions that have been discussed already, there would be no substantial detriment to the surrounding neighborhood if you permitted the conversion, and for those reasons, I think the board could comfortably approve this application based on that deviation from the conditional use standards. And I think that's it for my testimony, Mr. Chairman.
You're on mute, Chairman.
You're on mute, Mr. Chairman. Now, any more questions for Mr. Williams, please? Questions to Mr. Williams? Mr. Williams, you referenced the Historic District, excuse me, the Historic Preservation Commission's letter, and unfortunately, I don't find that in my packet.
It's the Plan 22 regulations report.
Mr. Williams, my copy of Mr. Williams.
It is.
Right.
Could you give us the benefit of the recommendations, because I don't have that available?
Well, they're in there.
The conditions that you referred to.
I'm wondering if it's possible to put them on screen, would that help? See if everybody can see them? Nicole, are you able to do that?
Mr. Chairman, do you have Mr. Williams's report?
If you wish, I can-
Not ready, available.
Okay.
Sure.
Sorry about that, I cannot put any, I don't have anything digitally in this computer, it's not my computer, so I can't put it up.
Okay, I heard someone else said he can share, and I would have a challenge today also.
I can read them if you would.
I can, there we go.
There you go, right there. Yeah, right here, right? And there it is.
I can also read it in if anybody needs me to.
We have the document.
Right.
We should be complying.
Alright.
Mr. Chairman, are you able to see this? You need me to move further down?
Yes, that's fine, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. That's fine, thank you. The applicant has agreed to comply with these conditions.
Yes.
Alright, other questions for the board's planner, board, anyone? Is there any member of the public who has a question for Mr. Williams?
I don't see anybody's hands.
No, Mr. Santan Brocio, if you have any questions for Mr. Williams?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Santan Brocio, you have the opportunity to summarize.
Very briefly, I'll basically submit, I wanted to reiterate the Historic Preservation Commission's approval, but the board will be taking care of that. Mr. Williams' testimony with regard to the D3 being different than the D1, very helpful. We're focusing on that one unmet condition, essentially one, because the two conditions practically duplicate one another. Essentially, the prohibition against- Essentially, the prohibition against residences on the first floor, I think are mitigated, number one, by notice the building. First of all, the first floor is somewhat elevated. It's not at ground level. And this home is isolated from, for instance, if there were, uh, in the business center next to a pizzeria or a nail salon, and you had a residential tenant on the ground floor between those types of uses, that would, to me, make sense why that condition exists in the, uh, in the buildings. But as you all probably have observed, we're sort of an isolated building. There's not anybody immediately next door that, that would present any safety or other hazards, uh, by around, uh, a residence on the first floor. So anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board for your attention.
You're welcome. And I should check, is there any member of the public wishes to speak?
I don't see any hands.
Here are no one. Here are no one. The time for public hearing is closed. More time for discussion. Who would like to begin the discussion?
Can you kick us off if you'd like?
Go ahead, sir.
Um, I have to say, I'm, I'm in favor of this application. I think it's the, it makes sense, the use, the use conversion is, it's not detrimental to the neighborhood. I think, you know, given that the Historic Preservation Commission has reviewed it, I'm, I'm inclined to, to, um, approve it. Uh, my only hesitation, and it's, it may be semantics, and I'm curious if other people have a similar uh, regard for it, is the line that we've proposed on the property line on the north facing side. Um, my, my concern is that the lines that are striped for, for the, for the adjoining property at the steakhouse might cross over that inadvertently, given that there is a friendly, amicable relationship. It's just more aesthetics. I, I'm concerned if we draw a line that, across there, sort of on the line, there may be, it may not look very good if some of those lines that have crossed over inadvertently cross over that line. So I'm curious if others have that concern as well. Um, it may be easily mitigated, or it may not be a problem at all.
Well, that's, that's an interesting point, and, and the, uh, the other situation is also possible that when the line is drawn, it's, it's, uh, found to be north of those, um, I think there are, providing, and we may find that the line is, uh, considerably north of, of where we imagine the property line would be, uh, since it hasn't, hasn't been marked in any photographs, or, um, it's difficult to judge. So it could go either way, actually.
Right.
Yeah, I, I guess my, my concern with drawing that line, um, to Mr. Redner's point, is that if you have a line that basically runs along the property line, there's a, there's a good likelihood that those cars that are parking, that are head-in parking with Bloomfield seafood or steaks and seafood, that they will consider that to be the end, the endpoint of their parking place, and that the cars might actually creep right up to that property line, thinking that that is the end of their parking place.
Yeah.
I'll jump in for a second. Um, as I recall, when I was just over there today, it's pretty clear where the parking is, so I don't know that people would cross over. But given all of this and that they have an amicable agreement, I don't even really know if the line is necessary. I would argue that the two parties asked not to have a fence, so I don't know if it's necessary. I guess the only question is if it'd be a hazard in any way. I, I get the benefit of it to demarcate the property line. I don't know if that's providing any real benefit, because it's pretty clear that some properties are adjacent, but it's very obvious, you know, when you're on one and then the next.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, I don't know whether this is helpful or not, but, um, looking on, on Google Street View down the driveway of the subject property, there seems to be a, a grassy area beyond the, uh, the hedge row that separates the driveway. And then there's some kind of like, almost like a brick paper that runs up to and beyond the telephone, the light pole, and then there's more grassy area beyond that. I'm not really sure that, if this is accurate fiction, and it's a, I, I'm not sure that, that a, a line's going to make any difference, that there's already some demarcation existing already.
Well, that's interesting, and, and another, a, another factor is, of course, neither property owner could, could paint a line if they wished to, and so far, neither property owner has wished to paint a line, and in fact, they mutually reject the fence. So, uh, I'm, I'm inclined to agree with my colleagues. I, I don't see any reason, I mean, a requirement to paint a line when, a line can be painted by either owner if they wish to.
I'm in agreement with that.
I agree also, especially since they could have painted it over the last 50 years and didn't. Yeah, it's, it's clear when you're on one property and the next. I should have looked at it when I was just there, an hour ago, but whatever.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Any other discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Prince.
I am in agreement with, uh, Mr. Johnson's idea of the line, but if the applicant and the, uh, their neighbor are not in favor of, then, then of course, we leave it to their discretion to choose to do as they wish. Just that I look at it from a tenant's point of view, and since it's going to have more tenants there than usual, um, I, I feel, I'm just looking at it from the tenant's point of view and thinking that I would much rather see a, a, some kind of demarcation to save those that overstep the property. Please don't, and that's my own concern. But if the applicant and their neighbor are satisfied with the conditions as they are, then I would just simply, uh, acquiesce to their decision.
Thank you.
Mr. Valniki, yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Prince on that. I mean, if both the, uh, neighbor and the applicant, uh, have a, a good neighborly, ongoing relationship, and, uh, and if it is, uh, like Mr. Rubin said, you know, the, uh, that grassy area and a pavers in between, it kind of demarcates, you know, exactly where, uh, it is, then, you know, it's, it's not necessary.
Thank you. Any other discussion, board, regarding this application? There are no other candidates to take motion.
I'll move to approve this application as presented. I don't think there was any restrictions that we identified.
Subject, subject to compliance with the recommendations of the Historic.
Yes, thank you.
Preservation application.
Correct. That's.
In that, in, in that, uh, resolution, they, did they mention about having the lights shielded? Or not?
They testified to it that, uh, that was Mr. Marucci, who said he thought it was, um,
Satisfactory.
I think it was satisfactory, very sufficient, yeah.
Correct. That was Mr. Marucci.
All that is a condition.
All right, um, it's a second.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
All right, Mr. Johnson, seconds. Please pull the board, Mr. Stiber.
Okay, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Valniki?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Stivers?
Yes.
Chairman Machowski?
Yes. Application was approved with conditions mentioned. Thank you, Mr. Santa Brocio.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I'm with the board.
Have a good night, guys.
I have another.
Have a good night. Oh, that's right. You do have another case on.
I'm mute for a while.
Okay.
All right. That brings us to Old Business Fight Day, the application of Michael Gannella as applicant and Alice Hansen as owner for both variances and any such other relief as may be required in zoning laws action rule there to keep and ready construct the driveway expansion and fence in a residential one family or one B-zone premises known as map 27 block 736 lot 12, better known as 212 Hoover Avenue. Is the applicant or counsel for the applicant here, this evening?
Yes, okay.
Mr. Gannella is here, is he?
Mr. Gannella, uh, are you representing yourself, sir?
Yes.
All right, swear in, please.
Okay, Mr. Gannella, raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Just state your name for the record.
Michael Gannella.
Thank you, Mr. Gannella.
Mr. Gannella, you can tell us what, what it is you propose to do or have already done, uh, what variances you need, and what the justification is.
Could you just tell us what your relationship is to the property and the applicant? Me?
Yeah.
Alice Hansen, she's my mother-in-law, Alice Hansen. Okay. Thank you. That's what I needed to know. No problem.
So, Mr. Gannella, you can tell us what you plan to do or have already done, what variances or variances you need, and what the justification is for the variances.
Yeah, so my drive, my existing driveway was very old, very broken up, and to the right of it, the whole length of it was all dirt and what I just, it was a mess. And every time it rains, it would flood, cause a lot of mud that would always run down to the sidewalks, would actually get into my basement. So my plan was to rip the driveway up, redo it, and actually go over more to the right to eliminate all the dirt. So I would just have, you know, all pavement and park my two cars in there.
Mr. Gannella, you might want to explain that you did it and, and how it came about that you.
He, he, yeah, so I actually did the driveway, not knowing that I needed a permit or, or from this case, actual variance. And as far as the fence goes, I had a fence for like 15 years. That was just all rotted, so I replaced the panels with new fence. And that's when I got a summons in the mail months later about, you know, the, the driveway expansion. And that's when I came down and I met with this zoning official, and then he told me how to apply for variance. And that's when I went ahead and applied and did what I had to do to try to get this straight.
All right. Questions for, uh, for the applicant board? Board?
Mr. Chairman, I do just one.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Gannella, the, um, um, the paint area next to your driveway, to the right of your driveway, is that it? Or is that a driveway itself?
No, it's all grass, and then beyond my fence is a commercial property. It's a parking lot to a commercial property.
And that's the property I'm speaking of. Is that a driveway, uh, it is, is, is a driveway and not a street?
No, it's not a street.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah.
Uh, there are questions for Mr. Gannella.
I just have one more.
Mr. Gannella, are you white? Go ahead.
No, come here, I'm sorry. You're probably going to have, go ahead. I just wanted to clarify. Go ahead.
Well, I wanted to know first, Mr. Gannella, are you increasing the curb cut at all, or is the curb cut remaining the same?
Well, what happened with the curb cut was, because I ended up doing my apron, which wasn't part of the plan, when, because this is, this was like something that took place over like a three-month time period. So I had bad water flow into my house. So I called the town, and they sent somebody from the water department out. When they came out, is when they told me that my water line into my house was, I guess, the old galvanized pipe, that they told me that through all the years, three-quarter inch pipe could have been down to a quarter inch, so I had very bad water flow. Uh, that time, he tells me what is entailed to fix that. So I had a contract speedy. He had to come break up my apron to put the new water line in. So, God's, you know, like everything, you want to do one thing, you open a can of worms. So now I had no choice at that moment to do the apron over. So, uh, once speedy does his work, he finds that the pipe in the street, there was also, I don't know, some issue there, which he contacts the town. They show up a week or two later, they have to actually break open the middle of the street and change all kinds of pipes. Their apron again, it, it just caused a lot of damage. So now I had a hole in my apron. It was very old. I had no curb that's, you know, over the last however many years from snow plowing. So, since I was doing it, I said, well, I might as well do the whole apron. When I did the curb over, I probably did go about two feet more because the curb, I went to where the curb was actually in good shape. So I just went and put it in new to where the, uh, where, where the broken curb had stopped. So I probably went about two feet more.
And when you're parking these cars, will these cars be parked on the side of the house and not in the front yard of the house?
Yeah, my, my driveway goes, it's along the side of my house, and it goes back. Like, when my two cars are in, you can't even see them from the, I mean, you wouldn't even know they're there unless you pull right in front of my driveway.
All right. Other questions, board?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, one. The report, I believe, Mr. Marucci's report indicates that when you replace the fence, you change it from a four-foot fence to a six-foot fence. Is that, is that accurate?
I would say that the fence that was originally there was, it was a very old fence. It was about five feet. Because the existing fence that still runs in between my driveway and the commercial property, it was, it was the same fence that just matched it, and it was, I, I don't know, it looked like, like it was one of the fences that was put together. So it was probably five feet, which, you know, now they don't even come like that. So I just replaced the panels with a six-foot panel.
Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Prince.
Um, so, uh, Mr. Gannella, does your six-foot fence run from the, uh, your beginning of parking line up to the house? Or, I mean, you know, along to the.
It's toward, it's towards the back, it's towards the back. It's kind of just walking off the backyard. It's probably from my sidewalk, it's got to be maybe 40 feet back to where the side, where the fence starts.
So you have a six-foot fence from your sidewalk up to the, uh?
No, no, no. It goes from my house across the driveway, all the way towards the backyard. You can't, it's not in the front of my house. It's towards my backyard. It's the gate. It's past the driveway.
Past the driveway?
Yes.
Okay, and what about the fence according to the, according to the, uh, picture that was submitted, there's a small, most like a four-foot fence? You saying that that's no longer there?
Four-foot fence where that runs down the whole perimeter in between the two properties?
Yes.
No, that's still there.
So where is your six-foot fence?
Where my gate to get into my backyard is. It, it runs the opposite direction.
Perpendicular to the, uh, four-foot fence?
Right. It's the same gate that I had, it's just new panels that go in there, because it was, got to be 15 years old.
Right, so it is from the four-foot fence to the back of your house is a six-foot fence, perpendicular, you know, to the house and the, the four-foot fence?
Yeah, can I, it's, it's the same as that way the fence was before. It's just new. It's.
Okay, but I don't know how it was. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, um, I don't even know if I have a, I don't even know if I have a. So I don't, I don't, I'm not very savvy.
If you have, uh, Google Maps Street View, if you open it up, that, you can see the current conditions. It's, it's live in Google.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, I'll take a look at that.
Can you share it on the screen?
Uh, can I share it?
Yeah, can you share your, I don't know, I'm asking.
I don't, uh, I don't think you can share Google Maps on.
Yes, you can.
I should. Well, yeah, I can. I can, I can share on the screen.
Yeah.
Yeah, hold on. Okay. You guys see the, the?
Yes.
Yeah, I see what he means.
That's helpful.
You can see this is the old fence.
Yeah.
This is a six-foot.
Yeah.
And, and you can see where the curb cut was changed here, and you can see how the driveway is widened.
Right, right. So, Mr. Gannella, the, this, what we're calling this four-foot fence that runs along the property line, is that a first fence? that runs along the property line, is that a four-foot fence or does that bolt in the property?
I believe that, that's my, that's my fence.
I see.
And you can actually see where that side fence that runs along the property line there, it actually does step up, it looks like from a four-foot up to a five-foot fence.
There.
Yeah.
That's a four-foot and then that's a five-foot.
Now, that's the fence that, that and my old gate where you see the new pieces now, that is what's been there for the last fifteen years. And then since, you know, before that store was very vacant, but, you know, since now that people go in there, they buy lottery tickets, they sit in the car, you can look right over my fence, it's, you know, I have three kids that are always in the yard and...
Just sort of, the fence, a variance is needed for that fence because it's technically in a side yard. It's similar to the one we did last month, I think, or the fence cut across, the fence cut across the driveway. But that's a side yard fence because it's technically in a side yard rather than the rear yard.
And some portion of the taller fence is also in the side yard that runs along the property line, it looks like?
Correct. For however many feet back to the, to the back building wall.
And so, Mr. Gennella, if I understand it correctly, you need this six-foot fence to buffer your property from the adjoining commercial use and commercial parking lot, is that correct?
Yeah, because if you can see, the old existing fence, I guess, I think you call it a shadow fence or something like that. So you can kind of see right through it and, I mean, the store in the last few years, it's gotten a lot busier. Now that they sell lottery, you always got people parking in the parking lot, doing lottery tickets, looking, you know, into the yard, it's just, for a privacy thing, it's, I got two dogs, it just really causes a, it's not a good scenario to have it that open. So that little bit, that little bit extra, you know, you'd actually have to, somebody would have to get up like on their toes kind of to look into the yard.
And, and Mr. Gennella, did you say a few minutes ago that you think that this fence might belong to, to your property or to...
Yeah, that fence, the old fence that there, that's my property, that's my fence.
So, is it, in the rear of the property there where you've got the new fencing there, you basically have two fences, is it possible to remove the old fence so you don't have the two fences?
Uh, yeah, I could do that, I didn't, you know, I just thought to just screw the newer fence right on top of it for, but, but yeah, I can take, like towards the back end where you see the double, I could take those down, yeah, that's, that's not a problem. The posts, the posts would have to stay, obviously, because, but, you know, the actual panels, yeah, I could take them down.
So you're saying that, you're utilizing the existing posts for the new six-foot fence?
Exactly.
I see, okay.
It may be better to leave it, Mr. Johnson, by the time you get it done pulling parts of that fence apart, it may...
Right, right.
Have a poorer appearance.
Yeah.
And the other thing I'm asking, Mr. Gennella, is what a reason for widening your driveway, which you've done, uh, to enable you to be sure you park both of the cars in the side yard rather than the front yard, which is prohibited?
Well, yeah, that's another thing. Yeah, when my, if I would park my car behind my wife's car, I would be kind of close to the side, I would, I just, and this is a very dangerous area here, I mean, there's accidents in front of this, in front of my house through the years. Every few months, there's accidents. So I just, it's just way better, you know, and it just, it looks way better from the curb. I don't, every time it would rain, like on that, like tonight, I'd have a lake there. And my side, the sidewalk should be covered in mud, it was just, it was really not pretty to look at.
Before, Mr. Gennella, with the new driveway, what the, was there any drainage added to that besides just the runoff into the street?
Uh, no, we just, see, to the right of it was a lot lower, so we just built it up with some stone before they paved it, just to get the elevation right, and then it just, you know, just follows my existing driveway that was there.
Well, what about your house's drainage from your gutters? I see the, uh...
Yeah, they, yeah, I put them under the ground.
And where did they...
Get them out of my driveway.
Okay, and where do they, where does that...
Uh, through the curb into the street.
Is it on there, can we see it on there or what?
I think it's more to the, it's on the right, it's to the right, not there, to the other side.
Here?
Yes, somewhere right, yeah, right around there.
Yeah, there it is. It's right there. I'm like the assistant.
I love that.
And there's the hole in the street, that's when the town had actually come and replaced their pipes, they had to break the whole street up.
And, and what is the total width of the, of the driveway as...
The driveway now is, I believe it's twenty-four feet.
Mr. Gennella, do you know the lot area ratio?
Um...
Coverage?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I had my...
It might be in Mr. Marucci's report?
Yeah, I, I would be, I don't even know what numbers I'm looking at here.
All right, hold on.
We'll be here during for Mr. Marucci.
Right.
Um, Mr. Ruben, is, is it large variance implicated in consideration? Mr. Ruben?
Yes, there's actually a lot of variance. Uh, can I ask Mr. Gennella a couple of questions?
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Gennella, it appears to me from what they've shown on the screen that the new fence goes over back to, um, Atlantic Avenue, the Valentine Road, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, that's the back, it's through Valentine Road.
And then does it cut across Valentine Road frontage all the way to the lot line that's in the, I guess, eastern part of the property?
You mean down Valentine Road?
Yeah.
Yeah, that used to be like, um, I don't even know what you would call it. There's, it was like a very low, like spindle kind of fence there. And, um, again, like I said, it was like fifty percent open. And with the school there and I got two big dogs, that, that's not a good thing either. So the fence, yeah, that fence goes down the back side also.
And he's got this fence in the front yard now, and we need to deal with that.
Because it's on Valentine Road, is that...
Correct. Um, I also, I think there's a provision, um, that driveway, the maximum width of the driveway is twenty-two feet. Even if it fronts on a, um, garage. Let me just find that for you, just give me one second if you will. Um... Yeah, the width of this driveway should be less than the width of the garage, not two feet, twenty-two feet at the building line. So I think that's one, this one foot driveway, that needs a variance as well for driveway width. Um, but, um, I think a bigger concern for me, and I, you know, is with the fence in the front yard. Mr., no, just so you know, um, front yard fences, the residential domes, um, can't be only four feet, they have to be open. And because on the street, you have two front yards. Your backyard is actually a front yard, as is your front.
Really?
Yeah.
So now, so my backyard is actually considered a front yard?
You got it.
All right, so now, let me hear you, let me, just this crazy question, I don't know, maybe I'm... So now you see the fence that is there, the small one?
Okay.
All right, so that is a four-foot fence, so now I have the bigger one inside it, right? So, and what am I, you see, so I have the little fence that's there. That's, I mean, I have two dogs that'll jump right over that and, I mean, you know, I don't need little kids coming from the school sticking their hands in the fences, which they do all the time. So that's why I have a solid fence there inside of the original fence. I mean, it's a, it's a real hazard with my dogs.
I'm just, I'm just saying we gotta deal with it, I'm not saying it's justifiable or not justifiable.
Right, but no, I got, I got it. Which would be, we have to get a variance, like apply for a variance again, or...
I, I, you know, I, you see, Nicole, I, I, James, can you look at the mirrors and see if the cats are over there?
Hold on. Just give me one second here. Yes, it's part of our, it's part of our, um, what we put in the advertisements. The applicant may also seek any such other variances and waivers that may be required.
No one's here complaining about it.
No, that's true.
You know, people across the street would have gotten noticed, and even if they, you know, they'd be noticed of the fence anyway, and even if they, you know, they're not here.
And Mr. Gennella did do all his notice properly.
I leave it to the board, Mr. Marucci, do you have any opinion about this? Did we swear him in yet?
Uh, yeah, we're still working, working on Mr. Gennella.
All right, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but, I'm sorry. We'll get to him.
I have a question for Mr. Gennella.
Go ahead.
Um, sir, I understand you put the rear fence in, and that's why you're here. But if we were to consider giving you a variance for the fence, would you be financially able to replace the whole part, that five-foot fence that is a little unsightly that you said people can see through? I mean, if we were to put the trouble to give you a variance, would you replace all of it so that it was more becoming?
So, now, just so you said my front, we're talking about the back here, about the wall, right?
Let me just say, I don't know what we're gonna do, but I'm just asking hypothetically.
Right.
If we gave you an approval for the fence that you directed, would you take all of this old fence down so that you had a more uniform and potentially more aesthetically pleasing fence?
Yeah, so, so like in the back area here, where there's the shorter fence below the big fence, right, above the wall?
Mm-hmm, yeah, well, I don't even know height-wise, I'm just saying, you know, is that something you contemplate?
Yeah, lis- listen, I don't want to do anything, you know, whatever I could do that is okay with you guys and it's what I have, you know, it's what I have to do, though. You know, so if I have to take that little fence down so it's just the big one that's in, that's what I'll do, and that's fine.
Is it the same on this side where the, the, um, posts would still have to remain?
Uh, no, this one here, I have regular posts.
Okay.
I have the bigger posts on there.
Okay.
So, so that little four-foot fence is completely independent?
That's got its own little post in there, yes.
Okay, all right, so that, that could actually come down then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it, is it possible to put, um, on that side of the fence that's facing the commercial property, to put cedar board on the, on the front-facing side of it? So that it would look more uniform?
I mean, would that be less expensive than just replacing it?
Uh, I mean, you need, okay, so, yeah, like over here. But no, to the right, Mr. Styris.
Oh, I see, you mean on the other, on that side?
Yeah, so you need to put those layers on top of that, yeah, I can do that, just... Right, because normally, normally a property, you're supposed to face, and that's why I don't, I'm not entirely certain that's your fence.
Well, no, that's how the, that's how the fence was on both sides. It was a shadow box.
Okay, it has the framework, okay.
Yes, it was a shadow box, so it was...
Got it.
It's, it's boarded in and boarded out, it's an old, you know, that's just, it's...
Okay, as though it's clad from the, from the outside, okay.
But yeah, I could buy more fence and, you know, I can install it on top of that.
I think it would be a little more pleasing and, and I agree with...
It definitely would, it definitely would.
Yeah, and the four-foot fence, I mean, I think, Mr. Styris, you can also look what it looked like previously. If you go to the top left of your screen where it has the little circle next to the word "street view", you can bring it back to, yeah, all the way back to 2013, hit the plus sign.
I've never done this.
So if you, if you click the, the plus sign in the square box to your right now, there you go, that'll bring you back in time there. Uh, this is, I think this kind of articulates the point that the applicant is making.
I think you're going the wrong direction.
Yeah, you're going the other way, Mr. Styris.
This, this is the property right here.
Oh, there it is.
I'm just trying to get a full picture. There's trees, a lot of man's go around the corner.
That little parking lot's different.
Yeah.
Yeah, they redid that, they redid the whole, yeah.
So, I have another, I have a suggestion, um, if we were to, as I said, hypothetically consider a variance, I think it would improve the property value if you had the, you know, that older fence removed and a, and a different one put up. But what about, is there an opportunity for some arborvitae or something that would provide the shielding that you want and maybe also soften the look a little?
Yeah, we're printing on adjacent property.
Okay, well, he's got a twenty-four-foot long driveway that should only be twenty-two feet. I mean, the question is, could you trim some of the driveway to allow for that buffering?
I'm, how can, you gotta be concerned about sight distances coming out of driveway.
You mean from the commercial property?
From both. That's why the fence is dropped down as it gets closer to the... So that people can see they're coming out of both driveways. And if I'm putting arborvitae up and down, you're gonna block people's vision.
Agreed, okay.
I know I'm not sworn in, but can I just make a comment?
Swear him in, George Nicole?
Yeah, let me, okay, hold on, hold on. Okay, raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just state your name for the record.
Anthony Marucci, I just want to make a comment while the board is discussing this. The fence, as you see it on the screen right now, there's a survey of the property in everybody's packet and it says that the fence is along the property line. So, i- if you're talking about removing that fence and putting arborvitae, it has to stay on, on the applicant's side of the property because right now that fence is along the property line.
Okay.
Well, that might not be the best option anyway now that, now that Mr., um, now that you've both identified the visibility issue. Thank you.
You do that in the back, because it's back to the front yard, because it would be planted in the retaining wall.
I, I don't know how wide that retaining wall is, but the last man when they were playing arborvitae is in front of a fence, we said they needed three to four feet.
Three to four feet, yeah. It might not work.
Yeah, I think we need to be conscious of that.
Um, Mr. Ruben, looking at this picture also, your concern is the six-foot fence, at the far end of the driveway, and I'm looking at the picture, I think there's a six-foot fence on the left side of that house. Also, was added?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's a side yard too, as best I can tell, so that might be a variance as well. That guy needs a variance too. And I think Nicole, this is all, what he did for the rear yard.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, what, A includes some side yards and B, it includes the front yard, because he's got two front yards.
Oh.
Yeah, I, I wasn't aware of that, I'm.
But somewhere.
I, I thought my front yard was the front, I didn't realize the back.
And that's understandable.
Also, Mr. Rubin, um, because his driveway is so close to the property line, does he need a variance for that, you know, width as well?
I mean, maybe a waiver for five, I think there's a five-foot setback.
Five feet.
Anthony?
Five feet.
Okay.
So that's, that's a design waiver, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question from Mr. Marucci, um, would the, the fact that he lengthened the apron, would that be considered actually, could it be, would it make it safer that it was a little bit longer since he's on a busy street there? Would there be an exception or rationale there, or not really?
We've had other cases where we've allowed the driveways to be widened on the side of the house, but not the curb cut, I mean, this was his choice to widen the curb cut, it's, uh, it's already done, I mean, it's, again, this, this goes back to the fact that, that it was done without permits, if he had gone to the, to the engineering department for a permit, they probably wouldn't have allowed him to widen it that much, but it's there now, it's done.
Uh, is a curb cut something that requires a permit, Mr. Marucci?
From the engineering department, it's part of the right-of-way. The sidewalk, the apron and the curb, the curb cut is all part of the engineering department. In my report, I, I made the, uh, comment or recommendation that if the board approves the application, he should go back to the engineering department and get the support, it's, uh, you know, just to clarify.
So, Mr. Marucci, that would be, uh, a curb cut, um, approval from the engineering department.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Canelo?
Uh, in, Mr. Brown, Nikki here, yeah, also, I see Mr. Marucci's report, uh, you should go back to the Department of Public Works where you removed the tree, you need the, uh, uh, permit for the tree removal there, if it was done?
Are you, are you asking me, Mr.?
Yes, yes.
Well, there, there is a tree ordinance in town, again, it's part of the engineering department to get permits for tree removal. Any other questions for Mr. Canelo? Does any member of the public have a question for Mr. Canelo?
I've got a quick question.
Any member of the public?
Hold on, Mr. Johnson has a question.
Hold on, hold on, I wanna find out if this public has any, but, and we'll come back.
Okay.
Anyone, Nicole?
Um, I can't see because of the screen here. I, I need you to take the screen here now.
Anyone raising their hand, Nicole?
I need the screen here.
Yeah, I'll talk. Here we go.
Okay, let me see.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I did have a quick, quick question to.
You have to hold on, please.
Hold on one second, I don't see anybody, Chairman.
All right, no member of the public has a question, go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, um, so was there a reason why you paved the driveway or made it twenty-four feet wide? Is, is that because you just weren't familiar with, with what the, the correct width was supposed to be?
Well, obviously, yeah, I had no idea that it was any restriction on how wide it was. So my driveway and then pretty much the equal part of it, the whole strip, was just all dirt. And it was that big dead tree that was there. Anytime it would rain, it would become, it was just a flooded mess that would flood my basement, run out into the sidewalk, it was just, it was an eyesore and it was kind of just all wasted space that caused damage. So when I wanted to repave the driveway, I figured I would just go over wider. Until this happened and then I found out that there were restrictions, I had no idea.
And, and is the driveway as it's currently, um, a- as you built it, is it strictly blacktop or is there anything underneath that blacktop?
Black, no, it's just a blacktop with the crushed down in the base, that's when they paved it.
So if we asked you, um, potentially, and I'm just throwing this out there, um, if the application was actually approved, i- is it possible that it could be narrowed back down to twenty-two feet to meet, um, the standard width?
Well, I, I mean, yeah, obviously, anything's possible that can get done, I mean, you know, I'd have to get somebody to cut it back and put the Belgium block curving in, I mean, yeah, anything can be done.
But, but it doesn't, it doesn't cause a detriment to you in terms of drainage or anything, it's, it could be done?
Yeah, it could be done, it just would be, you know, it costs, obviously, a financial cost, I mean, but yeah, it can be done.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Canelo, one more thing. So actually, I had a family member who did that, you just snap a line and it breaks up pretty easily, but, um, it's not that hard to remove it, because, um, we did it, but, um, would you agree that it might be a benefit to remove that, because then you would actually have, you go from an infervious surface to a porous surface and you could have some, that extra two feet of plantings along the edge and it would probably be more appealing. Um, I don't think you'd lose, you wouldn't lose the extra parking space, but you would gain some additional aesthetic value to the house.
Well, I, along the right side of the driveway now, there is three and a half feet or so of mulch, flower, but there's no flowers, but it's all, it's a mulch bed now. So, I mean.
I see, okay.
You know, I mean, it would make it a bigger flower bed, but I already do have, you know, a bed, I didn't go all the way to the fence.
Did you put Belgium block in along the flower bed, you mentioned that?
Yeah, yes.
So you would look it out, if potentially?
Yeah, so if you did, if that's, I would have to break the Belgium block up, obviously, cut the edge and then reset the Belgium block, you know, in another two feet.
Um, one other question, I didn't quite see it because we were looking at the Google Maps there, but was there a gate in the front there that you used to access against your?
My backyard, yeah.
You have a gate there, I couldn't see it.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess when the car, the cars will probably lock in it, but yeah, there's a gate there.
Okay, because you said the driveway goes all the way back, so the, the gate opens, allows cars to go.
Oh, and then it's my, no, 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 the driveway ends right where the fence is.
Oh, okay.
Then when the gate, then I go into my backyard.
But there's a gate in the fence that allows you to go into backyard?
Yeah, not with a car, you know, regular gate.
I understand, all right, okay, all right.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions for Mr. Canelo? Any other questions for Mr. Canelo? All right, thank you, Mr. Canelo. Um, a board here from, uh, Mr. Marucci, please.
Um.
Mr. Marucci.
Yeah, I already swore him in?
I've been sworn in.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Marucci.
Mr. Chair members of the board, uh, my report is dated April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, obviously, this was a violation, uh, that was issued, this goes back to, I believe, September of twenty-twenty, I was not in Bloomfield at the time, and, uh, my deputy, uh, Mr. Beazey issued the, the violation and summons, um. I did not, I, I concentrate, in my report, I concentrated on the violation, which was the width of the driveway and the, and the curb cut, uh, and violations of our, our ordinance there. I knew it was a thru lot, which, a thru lot means that it goes from Hoover Avenue all the way to Valentine, but I thi- I, I figured that that fence was already there, and, and so I didn't, I didn't question that fence, but, uh, Mr. Rubin brought it to our attention tonight and, and, uh, if that, that does require a variance because, again, it's a, it's a front yard and, um, uh, uh, six-foot high fences are not permitted in the front yard. With respect to lot coverage, um, I, I can safely say that the, it does not, the, it does not exceed the sixty percent that is permitted in the R1B zone. Um, my only recommendations are, if the board approves this, that the applicant a- apply for the proper permits through engineering for the apron and curb cut.
All right, questions for Mr. Marucci, please? Board?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Marucci, just to clarify, you said with the, with the extension of the driveway, it still falls within, uh, less than sixty percent of, of lot coverage.
Yes, be, yes, because you have the entire rear yard and you have the front yard that's all, uh, lawn area, so it's, it's, I can safely say it's less than sixty percent, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Marucci, please? Uh, does any member of the public have a question?
Mr. Wagner has a question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Wagner had a question, I believe he hasn't handed up.
Go ahead.
Um, Mr. Marucci, um, is there any, um, do you see any, any issue with having the, uh, the fence, uh, of that size on a, on a lot like that where the backyard's facing a thru lot, like you said? Is there any functional issues there?
Thru- thru streets are very unusual, but we do have them in town and, and where we do have them, uh, you, you, you know, the, the property owner does need some type of protection and that, so I can understand the fence of, of being erected there.
Okay, thank you. I have noticed that elsewhere in town.
I have a question for Mr. Marucci.
Go ahead.
Um, Mr. Marucci, do you see any advantage, uh, as to, uh, cutting down the, uh, driveway area, the cutting area, you know, and, uh, reinstalling the Belgium block in that, uh, for two feet?
The only advantage would be that it would give the applicant, uh, more room on the side if he were to plant any type of, uh, evergreen shrubbery or any type of plantings there. Other than that, it's, it's, it's just a cost, uh, effect, there's a, there's a cost involved.
And, um, with, uh, the drainage, the house, uh, you know, from the roof, the, the drainage going underneath the driveway to the street, that's, um, you feel good about that, it's, that's the way to do it?
That's pretty standard, that's where you, you want the drainage to go when, when the grades are that way. If, if the grading was different, where the, where the drain's gonna go into the backyard, but the drainage is gonna go to the front in this case.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Marucci? All right, thank you, Mr. Marucci.
Chairman, the best I can tell, Michael Rubin, these, these are the variances, right, I like that one. The driveway seats twenty-two feet of width. There's a variance needed for front yard parking or expanding a front yard parking non-performing situation. A variance for.
Mr. Rubin, on, on, Mr. Rubin, on that point, uh, the applicant provided testimony that he only would park in the side yard even if the driveway is in the front yard, is that?
Well, he could have then expanded the driveway only to the point where it's expanded in the side yard, but in fact, expanded in the rear, in the front yard too, so I think it's appropriate to, to consider a variance for that. Because you really, it could have been that, as we don't know, where the entrance narrow and then opens up. And then, um, new garage and then a six-foot solid fence in the front and side yard.
All right, thank you. All right, is there any member of the public who wishes to make a statement?
I don't see any hands.
Thank you. All right, um, board, in addition to the variances that were listed here, it sounded to me, uh, that there was also aesthetic conditions that were of concern to the board. And I'm not sure what we would, if, if the board decides to act favorably, how we would, um, approach these aesthetic improvements, which ones would be conditions? Um, an alternative would be to adjourn the meeting, adjourn the hearing, rather, and let the applicant come back. He's heard, he's heard the concerns of the board. Uh, the applicant could come back with solid proposals as to how he intends to, um, to mitigate some of these variances and to make, uh, appropriate aesthetic improvements that would help confidence stake for some of them. I don't know what your pleasure is, but it's my thoughts on the subject.
Mr. Chairman, if I may? Yes, I've, I, I would move that we ask the applicant to return, reason, one reason being is the, he still needs to go before the engineering department to, uh, to get the curb cut approved. If they do not, then, then he will have a, another, a different course of action. Um, I, I am concerned also about the aesthetic, uh, the aesthetics on the, uh, the thru street on Valentine Street, uh, with having that, the, that small fence there. I'm also concerned about having the, uh, the fence that, uh, the short fence that, that shows on the adjacent property, but I can't see putting yet a third fence up. So I would either like to see a simple six-foot fence that, that's, that's stationary and that is fine, or leave it as it is. Uh, so, uh, if the board is, is, is interested, I would, I would ask the applicant to, uh, return.
All right, thank you, Mr. Prince. Any other discussion, board?
I'd like to concur with Mr. Prince, I think that the applicant should be invited to return. Of course, we can hear the case now if he chooses, does not choose, but I think that he has the benefit of some of our feedback and I think that adding a third fence is not ideal, that potentially taking that down and replacing the full length of it to the height that's TBD, but, um, to be determined. I also do think that there would be value to eliminating the one variance that he's seeking, which is to bring the driveway to within twenty-two feet, would allow the property owner or future property owners to have, uh, opportunities for planting, which Mr. Marucci pointed out. So I think those are things that the applicant might want to consider.
All right, thank you, just Mr. Brown, anyone else? Have any thoughts on this?
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, go on, Mr.
Um, I, I would just wanna point out that we, that I appreciate the applicant's candor and the matter here, because he's been pretty, pretty accepting in terms of our feedback so far, which I appreciate. Um, I do wanna point out, though, that we, there already are four different fences in play here, uh, existing today, so there's a four-foot fence on Valentine, then you have the six-foot fence that was placed by the applicant, the existing shadow box fence as on the property line facing commercial property and the semi-private fence along the driveway. Um, I, I think that's an area where I, I have a, a concern for, and I think we, we all do in different ways, um, but I would probably be in agreement that it's some form or fashion where it can be redone either consistently or in, or removing the, uh, some of those fences in a way where it's either demarked by the driveway and the, uh, the boundary property or some other way. That's just an area I have a concern with, but I, I do agree with inviting the applicant back, but as it seems, he seems to be quite, um, willing to work with the board.
Thank you. Any other discussion, board?
Um, could this be wrapped up by going back to the applicant and see what he's, uh, if he's open?
Could this be wrapped up by going back to the applicant and see what he's, uh, if he's open for, uh, these, um, modifications tonight instead of him having to come back?
Right.
Hello?
Yes, Mr. Gennella.
Yeah, right.
Well, we don't know if a curb cut yet.
Oh, that's right.
We, we would need, for us to act, we, we would need a solid proposal for, for us, what's proposed with respect to aesthetics, the fences, the, whether the driveway and-
Curb cuts.
I don't know if that could be made clear, curb cut.
Anthony, can I ask you a quick question? The curb cut permit in engineering, is that something that gets denied or is that just something?
You're on mute.
You're on mute, Anthony.
Ask it on mute.
Oh, here, hold on.
Ask it on mute.
Here, did that help? I put, oh, nothing's, it's not going.
There it is.
Alright, there you go.
Alright. Sorry. Normally, uh, uh, an applicant goes to engineering for either a new driveway or replacement of a driveway and it's done where it's inspected before the concrete is poured. So it's not a matter of denial, it's a matter of that he never got a permit to, uh, replace the, the curb cut and the apron.
Right.
It's after the fact, but it should be put on, you know, it, it should be done. I think that could be done after the board approves it. If the board approves the application, this way you'll have the resolution and, and, and he can go to engineering at that point. It, it's up to the board.
I just wanted to make it clear that it wasn't something that's normally denied. It's just worked through with the engineering department. It's a-
Right.
Right, okay.
Because they're supposed to inspect the actual works before it's done.
And with, and with that, since the curb cut is not, uh, you know, uh, a reason for denial, then, then I would, uh, then I would withdraw unless the applicant is willing to, uh, to try and meet some of the, uh, concerns with the fencing today.
Yeah, I would have, I, me personally, I don't like the way it looks from the outside myself. So if I was able to take the little fence down in the back, I would definitely do that. Along the side, I'll see if I could possibly just get down the original fence. And, or whatever, you know, whatever I have to do to make it all look uniform, I'll definitely do it.
I think it might be beneficial to have the applicant come back so he can give us a concrete, uh, proposal. I feel like these are good ideas, but, um, I'm just, I suppose you can articulate them all. I'm just worried that there's, there's some, you just said you have to check and see if you could do this or see if, if you could do that. So I want to make sure that if you commit to something, that it is something that is going to be feasible. And I, you know, dememorandize them.
Alright, yeah.
That's a concern.
Alright, Mr. Mr. Gennella? You have, as I s- are you there, Mr. Gennella?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, a- a- as I see it, um, you have two, uh, two choices. We can take a vote tonight and I don't know how it's going to come out. Based on discussions that, that we've had and you've represented to make some improvements. Or we can adjourn this and you can come back with, you know, concrete proposals as to what you're going to do. That Mr. Ruben can record in, in resolution for this. And that the board will be able to take a, uh, a vote with certainty on. We don't really have before us, uh, solutions to all of these issues. So I'll, you know, I'll leave it up to you. We could take a vote tonight or you could request an adjournment and come back with, tell us exactly what you can and we'll look.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, I guess the safest thing to do would have it, let's come back and other, once I know if I'm able to just take down what's there or if I have to, you know, take it all down and redo it. I don't want to tell you I could possibly do it this way and then it doesn't work out and then it becomes a bigger problem.
That's, that's the safest thing for you. Um, I agree, Mr. Gennella, because let me tell you, if we take a vote and turn you down, you gotta rip everything out.
Yeah, so, no, I want to make sure that whatever I say I can do, that that's the way it's going to be done and then everybody's happy.
Alright.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Should Mr. Gennella also, uh, uh, when he, before he comes back, uh, get together with Mr. Marucci and then, uh-
Absolutely.
He can add, uh, add, you know, so the specifics into exactly what his plan and what he's going to be using. You know, what fence is going to look like and all the details that way.
Site, site triangles and everything else that's of concern here. Yes, Mr. Gennella, that's a very good recommendation. Mr. Marucci's more than happy to meet with you, uh, to discuss the details of, of-
And Mr. Gennella, you can also get to the engineering department and we can get your curb cut, cut permit underway.
Gotcha, okay.
That is-
It's very, it's very painless, I saw it.
Alright, so we'll adjourn here, Mr. Gennella. Would you like, uh, the next meeting or would you like September?
Let's do Su-
So we have a no?
Yeah, let's do September. It's a little hectic with the kids home and it's so that I can concentrate and get everything taken care of for September.
Sure, you can do that. That'll be September ninth. Alright, they have a motion to adjourn this application, board, to September ninth, please, without further notice required.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Belniky, moves it. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Prince, seconds. Hold, favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? I hear no one opposed. Oh, is there anyone in the public here for this matter?
No.
I hear no one. Alright, um.
Mr. Gennella, just, just to make sure, um, board has certain time periods that the law, law is on them to, to decide certain types of applications like this one and the time period varies. I just want to ask that you extend those time constraints for board to, so that if the time period were to run during this adjournment period, there wouldn't be any problems?
You should repeat that, I don't understand.
In other words, the, the law says that, uh, you know, for certain type of applications, maybe even this one, it, it, board has ninety days to decide the application.
Okay.
That ninety day period may run between now and September. And so as a matter of course, applicants, say the adjournments, extend those time periods so that those, they don't run and problems don't arise.
Alright, so are you saying for me not to make sure I don't adjourn September's meeting?
No, what I'm saying is just extend the time period that we have to decide this case to September ninth. So they don't expire before then.
Gotcha.
So yes.
So do you, will you extend those time constraints?
Yeah, yeah, I extend those time constraints.
Yeah, because if you don't, I would opt to dismiss the case and have you refile.
We don't want to do that.
Oh, alright, yeah, extend them.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Alright, he's asking for your permission.
Yeah, you have the permission.
Okay. You're on mute, Chairman.
Street twelve Hoover Avenue is adjourned to September ninth at seven PM and no further notices to require. And then it's, if you're getting in, you don't have to notice again.
Correct.
Okay.
This is the notice tonight. Alright?
Yep, thank you, I appreciate that.
Good night, Mr. Gennella.
Good night, guys.
Thanks. Keep going, board, do we need a break? Anyone need a break? Anybody want to need a break?
I'm gonna go.
I'm good. Alright, well, keep going, man. Can you turn?
You're on mute, Chairman.
I was just speaking to my staff here.
Oh, okay.
Alright, moving right along. Uh, site C in rural business is the application of Jose Perez and Michael Mayer as applicants of homeless or bulk variances. And any such other relief as may be required concerning more potential build to construct a second-story addition. And a residential, one-family R1A zone, the premises known as map forty-five, block twelve sixty-one, lot twenty-two, better known as five Leo Terrace. Is there counsel for the applicant this evening or is the applicant representing himself?
No, Mr. Chairman, Paul San Ambrosio, attorney representing the applicant in this case.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Santa Ambrosio, please proceed.
Yes, as you said, five Leo Terrace, we're in a R1A zone, block twelve sixty-one, lot twenty-two. I represent the owner and applicant, Jose Perez. He wishes to put a partial second floor or second story addition on his home. I'd say partial because, uh, the addition only pertains to the rear of his house, not the entire second floor. And it is not an increase of the footprint of the house. It is going above, uh, the existing first floor. The problem with this matter is that there is a requirement of a six-foot side yard setback in this zone. The home, uh, as built is four point seven feet in, in the right rear corner of it, if you would survey. And that's existing. And the proposed addition would also be four point seven. So it's not in compliance and therefore bulk variances required. From the tax records, it appears that the home was built honor before nineteen hundred. And maybe Mr. Marucci knows, but, um, I'm speculating that the home was there before the lot lines were drawn or certainly before the ordinances were, um, established. I have two witnesses, the applicant owner and his architect.
Alright, go ahead and call your witnesses, please.
Mr. Perez, are you on?
Yes, I am.
I'm going to swear him in. Uh, Mr. Perez, raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just state your name for the record, please.
Jose Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Perez.
Jose, you're the owner, owner of the property, is that correct?
That is correct.
How long have you owned the home?
Uh, twenty years.
And is it true that the home was built approximately in the nineteen hundreds or nineteen, the year nineteen hundred?
Yes, I believe that's true, as far as I know, yes.
It's an old home.
Yeah.
You're asking the board for permission to construct a second story, uh, partial addition in the rear of your property, is that correct?
That is correct.
And what is the purpose of the addition?
Um, I want to build a master suite, uh, and building a bathroom, bedroom and a sitting room that I plan to connect to the, the rest of the house. Right now I don't, you know, I have a bathroom upstairs, but I don't have a, a bathroom within, that's in the bedroom. So I really want a, a master suite for my house.
Okay, and is it true that, uh, the right rear corner of your house is only four point seven feet from property line?
That is true, yes.
And you understand that the, the ordinance requires that you have six feet of dexterity?
Correct.
What is to the rear of your property? What's behind your property that might be affected by this addition?
I don't believe that there should be anything that's affected by the addition. It's a, I have a, a backyard that, uh, is behind the property. Um, and then, of course, I'm surrounded by neighbors, but, uh, it should not interfere with any of their view or any, it should not be of, any change to them whatsoever. I'm basically just going up, not changing the, um, uh, you know, the, the look of the house or the, or the, uh-
The, the covered space.
The covered space, exactly.
Um, we, we shared, uh, Mr. Marucci's memo, uh, with you, our office today, is that right?
Yes.
You, you recall in Mr. Marucci's, uh, report, he expressed a possible concern and suggested that I elicit testimony from you that you had no intention of using your home, uh, as a two-bedroom residence.
I have no intention of doing that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have no other questions.
Board, questions for, uh, the applicant, please?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead, Mr. Prince.
Uh, Mr. Perez, um, with the, uh, next, across from the addition, your neighbor's property, um, how far is their house, uh, from yours?
Um, I'm not sure exactly what the, what the distance is, uh, the property-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I mean, they have a backyard, so my backyard faces their backyard, so I would say, you know, thirty feet. I'm not, I'm not really sure, to be honest.
What, what will your addition be facing? The backyard or a house?
My, my addition will be facing my backyard.
Well, the side yard? The side of the house, the, the four-feet extension?
No.
I meant the four-feet side yard?
My, no, my addition will be facing my backyard.
On the right side of the property?
On the right side of the property, it will be facing, yes, the, the neighbors.
Right, okay, and facing the neighbor's house?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, alright, thank you. And, and, well, uh, how far away do you think that is?
I'm going to guess, I really, I'm, I don't know, but I would say about thirty feet, I don't know.
Thirty feet distance?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, board?
Mr. Chairman, I, I have a question. Uh, Mr. Perez, um, the, is what's being proposed, is it only a second floor addition? So there's already something there for a first floor?
Correct.
That extends out from the, from the original house, in other words?
Yes.
Okay, and so you're proposing to add a second floor, um, and that's, none of that is built yet, is that correct?
That is correct. It's, there's an attic there right now, so I'm basically just going up and matching the, the, you know, the height of the rest of the house.
Okay, alright, yeah, that, that was kind of, I guess, my, kind of my question was that when I look at, at the Google satellite image, it looks like there's already two-story addition or a two-story structure in the rear of your house.
Yes, it's, it's an attic, correct. I have two attics.
So you're basically building out the attic space and expanding it?
Correct, building out, yes.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Perez?
Mr. Belniky, you're on mute, oh, sorry.
Does any member of the public have a question for Mr. Perez?
Hold on, Mr. Belniky's on mute. There you go.
Yeah, um, Mr. Perez, Mr. Marucci's report, he refers to on the architectural plans and altered wet bar?
Yes.
Could you educate me on that, uh?
Yeah, there, there is a, there is a wet bar there now, um, in the, on the first floor.
Okay. So, oh, I, I see, okay. So you're, you're not doing anything with that or anything like that?
No.
No, it's okay, oh, okay.
I'll be right back. Hello? Yes?
Any other questions for Mr. Perez?
Yeah, and, Mr. Perez, just, just clarification. So you're, you're not changing the footprint of the house at all, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Any member of the public have a question for Mr. Perez? Are you the one? Thank you, Mr. Perez.
Yeah, no, I have a question. Hello?
If you can answer yourself, your name and address, please?
Yeah, my name is-
Yeah, my name is Manetza, and I live at one of these on West Pasek Avenue. And Mr. Perez property is a side yard violation, he's violating my property. And basically, I have a question that this house is already a big house, looks like a two-family house, and he's actually part of that house. So like he said, mention of my privacy, and he's building balcony too. And at the, uh, Brooklyn Times, uh, John, he's already violating the side exit. So basically, my property is being violated. And he's saying thirty feet, no, my, uh, my, my property is only ten feet away from his backyard, ten to fifteen feet. So basically, I am the one only affected, and he's a huge guy, looks like a two-family house. So why we have to give a variation? Because the law already said that when he's already, he is the stage as that any property, any property with building, no building shall be moved, created, added, or enlarged, nor shall be if it is under the violation of the Schedule A setback requirement. I'm a licensed civilian engineer, worked for City of New York for a couple of years, almost thirty years.
Is there gonna be a question? Mr. Shaw, this is the time for asking a question of Mr. Perez. Later on, there's a time for the public to make comment. But right now, this is time to ask a question, Mr. Perez, in case of something you didn't quite understand. And so please, let me get your remarks to...
Yep. Mr. Shaw, do you have a question regarding the testi...
Regarding what?
Regarding the testimony that Mr. Perez just gave. So, Mr., the chairman...
Yeah, basically, no, basically, he's saying it's a single-family house to my, my son, that's a two-family house.
Okay, Mr. Shaw?
Yeah.
Mr. Shaw, Chairman Machowski explained that at this moment, we're just taking questions. You can reserve your comments. At the end, there's another time where you'll be able to speak?
No problem.
Okay, so if you don't have any questions, just hold off on your comments, and Chairman Machowski will let you know when it's appropriate to give those comments.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone else have a question for Mr. Perez?
I don't see any hands, Chairman.
All right, thank, thank you, Mr. Perez. Uh, Mr. Santa Ambrosio, please proceed to your next witness.
Yes, I'd like to call Mr. Pietro Rosato, the architect.
Okay. Mr. Rosato, raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Paul, if you wanna qualify him.
Thank you, Mr. Rosato, tell us about your education, please.
Uh, he, um, got a degree from NJIT, and I have a license, license in New Jersey, New York, and Connecticut. Uh, and, uh, I am working on this project.
You testified before boards before and been accepted as a architectural expert?
Yes, I have.
Is that sufficient, Mr. Chairman?
Questions for? Someone has an expert in architecture.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Rosato, did you study the site?
Yes.
Did you study the ordinance?
Yes.
Did you draw the plans that have been submitted as part of this application?
Yes.
And we can call your pla, how many pages are your plan?
The submitted ones are four.
Four pages?
Yes.
Okay. Would you tell the board what you did in anticipation of drawing these plans and your site observation?
Well, the site observation was that, uh, the, as Mr. Perez explained, the addition that Mr. Perez wanted, uh, along with the minor first-floor alterations in the addition, uh, and also the existing conditions were over the side yard setback on the right side of the property. Uh, so obviously, the right side of the property is existing, it's an existing, not conforming, uh, condition, which is four point seven feet when is six feet is required.
And, um, does the proposed addition, um, encroach even further into that side yard setback requirement?
No, no, it does not.
Identical, right, four point seven feet?
Identical to the first, uh, existing first floor.
Okay, would you mind taking the board through your current plans, uh...
Yes, of course, briefly. Yes, uh, so the first floor is being altered, uh, we are, uh, like Mr. Perez said and answered the question, the wet bar that is existing, uh, it's being called altered because we are putting a door, um, into and separating that room because we're creating a study or a guest bedroom onto the first floor. But the main addition is the, uh, and the, uh, question is the second floor, which has a, a master suite that includes a bedroom, uh, sitting area, uh, a walk-in closet, and a master bathroom.
By the way, excuse me, should this, these plans, can they be marked A1?
A one hundred?
Sure, this is, these are the plans that were handed in?
Yes.
Okay, we'll mark the whole set as A1.
Thank you. By the way, Mr. Rosato, the expression wet bar, was that, um, the applicant's nomenclature or yours?
The applicant's nomenclature, nomenclature, but, you know, having a bar with a sink in there, it's called a wet bar.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm sorry to interrupt you, please continue.
Uh, no, that, that was basically it. Uh, the second-story addition is going directly above these, uh, an existing, uh, the existing house, uh, on the first floor, uh, and the rear of the property. Um, I believe that architecturally, architecturally, it's pleasing because it's, it reflects the existing house, uh, and the style of the existing house, um, uh, as opposed to what's in, what's there now, which is just a gable. Uh, and we are creating a grand gambrel roof, um, and creating a more Dutch colonial feel to it, which is the original house.
Anything else, because I have more further questions?
I don't.
Uh, more further questions, Mr. Chairman?
You're on mute, Chairman.
There's questions from the board, and I have one or two to start off with.
Yes, I have a couple of questions.
Mr. Rosato, um, is there a particular reason why the second-floor addition uh, follows the existing setbacks? Is there a structural reason or is others, okay, reasons for doing that?
A little bit of structural reasons, uh, along with aesthetically, you know, aesthetically, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's more pleasing to, to do so because we're, uh, we're extending the gambrel roof and expanding it to the first floor, so, uh, using an apron around, so, so that's, that's why we're doing it. But yes, structurally, it's probably the, you know, it's definitely the better, you know, uh, and it's more because it's easier to construct than, obviously. financially, uh, less impressive.
Um, it, this, the changes that you are, are making is already though intended to make this into a two-family dwelling instead of a one-family dwelling? Is there anything in that direction?
No.
No.
And I see in the plan for the second floor, uh, you call out a Juliet balcony. Could you explain that to us a little bit, what, what that is and how?
The Juliet balcony is essentially a window, um, and, uh, that opens up, the French doors that open up, and the Juliet balcony is, it's just a railing that is about, it's less than a foot, uh, protrudes out a foot from the face of the, uh, the, the back, the back face of the building, yeah?
That, is this, is there any practical difference between just that?
Uh, this one, you can, you, you can have French doors, and, and instead of a large window, you can, you know, it, it's not really affordable at the bottom, make, so...
It's not going either. Is this the type of balcony you want to go out on, stand on, or have a...
You can kind of, you can walk out up to the, essentially to the back of, it's, it's, uh, we usually make just so that we can have a bigger opening, okay? You can't really walk out, you know, onto the balcony, okay? But, you know, it's basically to bring the outside in a little bit more than a, than a regular window would.
So you're telling me that you, it would not be possible, for example, to put a chair out on the balcony or a barbecue or anything like that?
No, no, balcony depth, it's, uh, it's less than a foot or so.
All right. So, uh, it's a little bit functional and largely decorative, at this point?
Yes, yes. Yes.
Thank you. Uh, other questions, board? One other question? I do, Mr. Balnick. I'll have Mr. Balnick.
Uh, just to clarify, Mr. Rosato, so there is no, um, other doorways or anything like that up to the second floor? It's just from the interior of the house?
That's correct.
So it's no possibility of a two-family or anything like that?
No.
Okay, good. And, uh, um, yeah, Mr. Chairman, you took my fire away on the Juliet balcony. No, no other questions, thank you.
Mr. Wagner?
Mr. Wagner?
Yeah, hopefully a quick one. Um, Mr. Rosato, if, if, just trying to make sure my eyes are correct because I don't see any measuring lines on the property positioning. Am I, am I correctly seeing that the, the structure itself is not fully aligned or parallel to the property line?
That's correct. Uh, they shouldn't be exactly parallel. It might be, you know, this is, again, this is just a site plan here from a survey that we received, obviously. Um, but the four point seven is right corner at the worst-case scenario, so...
Right. Well, that's what I was trying to wonder, is, if further, closer to the street, if, that if it is in compliance at that point? I was just trying, that's what I was trying to see if that was measured to see if, if at any point the structure is in compliance with the, with the variant.
I don't believe so. No, it's, the survey says five point five feet at the front.
Ah.
I'm sorry?
Okay, so it's five and a half feet?
That's the survey that we have, then. It's attached to the update, it says five and a half feet at the front.
Got it.
Always.
Thank you.
I think they drew the lines after the house was built, and that's what I was getting at.
It sounds like it.
Uh, that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you.
Else?
I have one other question, Mr. Rosato. Um, the, um, looking at this, looking at the front of the house, the right side of the house, could you give an approximation of how far away the structure of the house is to the neighbor's house on the right?
I don't know, but, you know, I...
Is the, is the neighbor's house closed right along the, um, the property line there? Or is there a yard there and then the house?
May I respond to that af, later, after this, uh, when this is...
Sure.
Sure. Any other questions for?
I have a question for the witness. If you, if you look at the cover page, uh, Mr. Rosato, of your plan, uh, it showed the layout of the site, and it shows a large green area that is, and it indicates that's the proposed second-floor addition. But if you look at the floor area calculations to the left of that, it shows that you're only adding three hundred square feet to the second floor. And it seems to me that that gray area is a lot more than three hundred square feet. So I'm trying to understand if I'm on the right resolution, exactly what we're doing here. And it seems to me that, and you're gonna correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm not bringing that area, it's like a wide, I'm down the middle of it, uh, from front to back. And it seems to me, if I understand the testimony and the views that I've seen, that the right part of that already exists as an attic. And what you're doing, all you're doing is creating living space there where an attic currently is. And if I'm correct about that, does that mean that the new three hundred square feet is actually the left gray area that's shown on, on T nine hundred?
If I'm, I'm looking at the floor area calculations and the habitable area on the second floor, the proposed is six hundred and fifty-three square feet.
And existing is nine fifty-three, that's why I'm confused.
We're adding six hundred and fifty-three to the nine hundred and fifty-three.
Okay, so is that, but, 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 but the testimony was that there's only attic space where you are expanding. And what I'm trying to figure out is what's attic space and what's new?
So the attic space was non-habitable, okay? The existing, above that, that, that addition. The nine hundred and fifty-three is the, the four bedrooms that are, you know, that were attaching to the main house.
So are you ripping off the existing second floor?
It's not really a second floor there.
Well, I mean, it, you, it, it goes up way above the garage. So, I mean, it totally, it's as high as the remainder of the second floor. If you look at it from the street, are pretty darn close.
Okay.
But I really wanna understand what's new and what's old. I mean, if you look at it from the street, the, the, what you're saying is not a second floor, as much of a second floor as there exists a second floor today. There's a window there to, on both sides, there's a window on the side, and there's a window facing the street.
To answer your question, we're ripping it all out, and we're putting a new second floor on.
Are you ripping the part that also runs parallel to the side lot line? That's above the garage?
Yes. No, no, not above the garage, no. Only the back part.
Are you raising the height of that back part?
Yes, to match the height of the, of the house.
What's the current height of the back part?
Uh, the current height of the back part, uh, still have the existing...
Are you just data-scheduled there?
Well, that only gives us the, uh, the height of the, the overall height of the house, which is the main house, not the back portion.
I know my concern is that this is the northern lot line. So by raising the height of that backyard, what are you doing from a sunshade perspective to the backyard, to the properties, to the yard?
The property to the north is pretty far out.
I'm not talking about the house, I'm talking about the backyard. Are they, are you gonna, are you gonna basically hinder the sun that they're gonna get in their backyard by raising that up the way you are? Given the proximity to the lot line?
I don't think so, because we're not extending the height too much, you know, uh, much more than it already is, and it's, and we're matching the height of the existing house.
Well, which part of the exist, existing house? The highest part or that little wing that's in the back over the garage?
Highest part.
So you're increasing the height of the house pretty significantly in that back... pretty significantly in that back part? Is it gonna be higher than the part that's over the garage?
The part that's.
The, the wing that, you have, I forget, you have essentially the, the framing of the, of the, of the main part of the house. And then behind that, you have a little bit of a wing. And I, and right now, the peak of the section that you're improving reaches the height of the wing. And what I don't understand is, is the height of the addition going to be higher than that wing? Going to be high as, as high as the main part of the house?
Yes, we are increasing.
So there's gonna be a, a high part, a low part, and then a high part?
Uh, not quite. Not quite. Uh, because we are attaching the second floor to the main house. So it's gonna be essentially almost like an L shape. Uh, you know.
So are you gonna raise the height of that low part that's over the garage?
Well, the garage is a little bit further towards the front of the house, okay?
But there's a section of the house
Mr. Rubin?
or cuts out to the L that's low. If you go, do you have a computer?
Yeah, can I, I was gonna recommend, can I share my screen, Mr. Rubin? I have it up.
Okay.
Okay. So we're not talking hypotheticals. So are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah, I just don't understand what you're doing with that back wing relative, relative to the new addition.
I'm not able to see the screen for some reason.
I can see it clearly.
I can see it.
Yeah, I'm gonna redo it.
Show it again.
I could, I could see it.
Me too.
Me too.
Yeah, I can see it.
Yeah, it's up now, yeah.
Can everybody else see it?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Rosado can see it?
I don't know if it's my computer or, uh, yeah, I don't know.
Other way.
But essentially, so, so what you're saying is that, yes, there is going to be a two-story, the existing house in the front of the, of the property. Then you have a small portion where the garage is, which is lower. And then you have the addition, which is matching what the existing house in the front is.
So it's gonna go high, low, high?
Correct, that's correct.
And my question goes back to, given the proximity of that rear portion of the house to the adjacent properties, there's two of them, goes rear yards, uh, you know, but your, your client's property, what is that going to do to the sun that those properties get in the rear yard once you raise that addition? Given its proximity to the lot line? Um, I mean, it's a north thing, it's a north lot line, so the sun's in the southern sky.
Yes. It could potentially eliminate some sun from, from the backyard, yes.
And can we just clarify which lots you're referring to, council? You have that tax map there?
One oh seven to San Diego Avenue and one eleven to San Diego Avenue.
Yeah. I, I agree with your question as it relates to one oh seven. I was thinking, what about one eleven? That's, that's towards the front of the, of the home.
Well, the home, the, the, the addition is behind the home.
Yeah.
So the, if the addition's behind the home, then the addition's in the, in the backyard of that home. It's in both backyards.
May, may I speak?
Well.
Mr., uh, Mr. Perez?
I'm losing control here a little bit.
Go ahead, so.
Let him, let him finish with the, the architect, please.
Okay.
That, that's my concern is I didn't understand, it's really difficult to, to visualize what's happening here and what I'm gonna do, so, and. Okay. I mean, I don't know what I'm gonna say, Andrew.
Rosado, is correct that the existing and proposed so, rear guard setback is thirty-seven feet, or twenty-five is required? No.
No more, stop.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, what is the highest elevation of the roof?
We're matching the existing at twenty-seven five. Twenty-seven foot five inches.
Not exceeding that with the addition.
That's correct.
Thank you. Other questions for the architect, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Rosado, um, I had asked the applicant about the distance that the addition is going to be from the, uh, what structure or, you know, uh, is from the, uh, the addition of the applicant's property. And now I saw that with the last review of the Google Map, that there is a structure there. What is that structure?
Well, it's existing, it's, uh, it's basically, it doesn't change much from what, uh, what we had on the drawings.
Uh, you know, that's, that's what I'm asking. I'm asking on the neighbor's property, the neighboring property. Uh, looks like one eleven, looks like one eleven. And the, uh, Mr. Perez, I had indicated that, uh, the neighbor's house was thirty feet away. What is that structure, which was a brick structure that I saw from the Google Map? And how far away is that structure from the, from your addition?
It looks like a garage. The, the, the lower structure looks like a garage.
And how far away is it from that addition?
It looks about, uh, I think that's probably around thirty feet or so. That's the smaller structure.
That's the small structure?
So the smaller structure is of the house itself, which is two-story house. It's, you know, from, uh, from my expertise, it seems about twelve feet away. So it's, uh, it's roughly around forty-two feet.
Alright, that's, that's fine.
That's fine.
That's fine. And that's a bit our guess is good enough. I, that's what I was looking for. A clarity as to how far away the addition's gonna be from the nearest structure on the neighboring property. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? This is Mr. Shaw, a neighbor living at one oh seven Vespa Sec Avenue.
Uh, we gotta wait until we get to the portion where the chairman will ask you if you have any questions?
Yeah.
Just give him one minute. No problem. Chairman, are you there? Oh, okay, I already, I thought you were stuck for a minute.
There we go. Uh, alright, uh, we'll go to the public. Any questions from the public? Mr. Shaw has a question. Go ahead and ask your question, Mr. Shaw.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my name is Niraj Shaw. Uh, I live at one oh seven Vespa Sec Avenue.
Thank you.
And I'm the neighbor. Um, so, um, one point is, when this second story, um, it will be built, it, it's gonna, it's gonna raise it and gonna block sunlight in my backyard and in my house. So, uh, that's one point I wanted to just, you know, make. And then the second thing is, this house, um, you know, has a garage and this addition is in back of the garage. So it, that addition, uh, doesn't have, uh, you know, entrance on the back side. So there's a front, front entrance, and is there entrance in the back that's gonna be connected to the second floor?
That's to the architect?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
The answer is yes.
Oh, the answer is yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes to what? To which question, he kinda asked you too?
Well, so he asked me the question about the door, which was kind of the point that he made about the light, the sunlight.
Yes, yes.
So the door, yes, right, the door going in to intervene on the white barn from the back of the house, that's.
Existing? That's existing, is that right?
I believe, uh, yeah, so we're not really changing that.
Okay, and, uh, from my, my, my house, right, from one oh seven Vespa Sec Avenue, right? How far is this addition from me?
From the house and from your garage?
Uh, so, the, the garage is not my property. My property is behind that garage that you saw.
Sorry, I.
Yeah, one oh seven Vespa Sec Avenue. Yes.
Give me one second.
Yeah. You know, in my approximation, it's about fifteen feet. This addition's gonna be about fifteen feet and it's gonna be approximately twice as high than what it is right now. Okay?
One more.
Yes.
Twice as high.
So, so you asked the question, right, if that roof is gonna be raised and, uh, um, house gonna be, you know, doubling in size, right? From the backyard, because there's first floor and the second floor is gonna be added. And then there's gonna be a roof on the top. Right, right now it's just a roof with a little, uh, triangle and, and like a small attic. Right now on the, on top of the first floor, it's a, a pretty much just a roof with a little attic. That's gonna be raised up to, up to another floor, right, like another story.
Yes, we're not, we're adding about possibly fifteen at the beginning. That's not much more than that from the existing, that's the existing.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
The, in terms of sun, um, you know, you, I didn't do sun calculations, you know, from my, you know, my property, however, I don't believe that it's going to change, you know, really block some sun, possibly in the winter time, possibly in the wintertime when the sun is, is low, okay? But not so much in the summer.
Mr. Rosado, can I ask you a question in that regard? If this, the addition and the home were another one and a half feet away from the lot line, there would be no need for the variance uh, and this application? And if the owner built this identical addition, would things be any different for Mr. Shaw?
Things be any different?
Uh, no, uh, not, a little bit, but not much, not much.
Thank you. Questions for the architect, please?
Right, what is this?
You want?
No answer.
Best chance, questions for the architect?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, um, I'll ask your question to the architect if I could. Um, Mr. Rosado, um, on that, on the side that is facing one oh seven Pasaic, um, on the side of that second floor, um, when I look at your renderings, it looks like there might be um, a dormer window or something that protrudes, protrudes from the roof line? Um, is there a, a second floor window that will overlook that side of the, of the second floor?
There is a second floor window, yes, there is.
There's the second floor window that would face essentially, I guess that would be facing north. Um, i- is it a dormer window or is it?
Uh, yes, you can call it a dormer. It's really, yes, it's a dormer.
Okay.
And it really, it looks like a dormer, but it's not really a dormer, you know, structurally speaking, not sure.
Okay, alright. But it's, 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 it's a window that is essentially two feet away from the property line that will directly overlook maybe not one oh seven Pasaic, but it looks like it would overlook one Leo, um, that the corner property. It would directly overlook their backyard.
Yes, yes.
Okay. It's now, in, in your, in your mind, is that, for lack of, since we can't qualify the term, that dormer window, is, is it, is it essential?
Um, the one above, so there's two. One is above the bathroom. Aesthetically speaking, yes, they are kind of essential.
Okay.
So.
Yeah. I mean, now, now that I'm looking at your drawing here of the bathroom, I, I do see to eliminate it would be eliminating any natural light to the bathroom.
Exactly. I don't think we would want a mess room, uh, that, you know, sized and, and, uh, we're putting it, it's a, it's gonna be a beautiful bathroom, so I think he kinda wants an accent window as well. Even if it's, most of the time, obviously, it's gonna be closed and I'm sure it's gonna be, you know, but it's decorative, uh, and it's, and, and, right, right above the, the, um, along with the master bedroom window, uh, window two fifteen, that's, you know, uh, if you need natural light, we do have, you know, another window in the back and the, we have balcony. Uh, but just to kind of light up the space a little bit better and there, there's also a door, you know, so it's, uh.
Right, right. Well, the, I mean, the two windows make up the one dormer, right? I mean, it's all one big dormer.
One big dormer, yeah, so it's, you know, the whole second floor is technically dormer. Because we're, you know, with the walls and then everything else around it, even all the, 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 the room, uh, you know, that sweep down, you know, to the first floor, that's all part of, you know, the, 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 you know, queen of the, of the bedrooms.
Alright, and, and I, I understand what's, what's being proposed here and I, I understand the aesthetics of it. I, you clarified that, I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, this is Mr. Shaw. Uh, I have a question regarding that window. Uh, that window, you know, from my, uh, calculation, it's gonna look right directly into one of my bedroom's window. And, you know, and from my bathroom, I'm gonna be able to see that person in that window, as well as a balcony. If somebody's standing on that balcony, they're gonna be able to see in my bedroom and even oversee my entire backyard. Right, or, if we're sitting down with my family. Is that true?
Uh, not quite. So, so technically, you're.
Mr. Rosado, you're, Mr. Rosado.
You know, just to kind of give you an estimate here from my perspective, um, who have a man, the corners, the furthest corner of this house aligning with the furthest corner of your house. Okay, so they're almost tight, right? And those windows are much further in towards the front of our property, meaning that they're gonna be overlooking one Leo.
Your audio didn't, we didn't hear you, Mr. Rosado. Can you say that again?
So what I'm saying is that
That's better.
Those windows, those windows are going to overlook one Leo terrace from my calculations and again, overlooking in Google Maps and where the locations of the buildings are, okay? So there is almost no way that they're going to look over your property, okay?
Yeah, just so you know, I mean, uh, I'm, uh, you know, um, with respect, I disagree because I've been living here for twenty years and, 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 you know, those windows, you know, uh, gonna be able to see directly into my bathroom or if I'm taking a shower, directly into my shower, right, like, and, uh, and, and.
This is questions.
Excuse me, yeah. Do you wanna, we swear in? At this point, Mr. Shaw, I mean, you're engaging dialogue and we testify as long as we swear in so we can protect the record.
Okay, Mr. Shaw, I'm gonna need to swear you in. Can you raise your right hand?
Okay.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Uh, yes.
Okay, just once again, state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Niraj Shaw, one oh seven Vespa Sec Avenue.
Okay, you can, you can continue, Mr. Shaw.
So that, the, um, the. So, that, the, um, the window that's gonna be placed on the second, uh, story addition, right? That's gonna, according to my calculation, and living here for twenty years, gonna look into my bedroom window. Is that correct? Cause that's, that's...
He just answered my question.
I don't know how to answer that, because I, I haven't really done my, you know, I'm looking at this property, I, I don't know, you know, where your property line is, your lot line, but I'm looking at, like I said, I'm looking at Google Maps where the location of the building itself, right, the foot of the building. And if I'm looking at this, I can certainly say that those windows will, will definitely not look into your bedroom.
Okay.
I mean, again, from what, from my understanding and from what I have here, because I haven't really looked at your property, right, for the project.
Rosado, uh, is, is possible to use obscure glass in a bathroom window if you'd be looking at someone else's?
I'm, I'm sorry, what type of glass do you, you know, couple of...
Obscure, it's called obscure frosted glass, that's sometimes used in bathrooms. So, could, did your client's bathroom use such glass to avoid this, this issue too, if necessary?
Well, yes, that's, it, it could be a solution for it, um, you know, to, to answer your question, yes, it could be a solution.
Okay.
Pardon? Questions for Mr. Rosado?
I don't see anybody else.
Only one, scolding twice?
No, I don't see any hands.
All right, Mr. Sant Ambrosio, any other wins? No, Mr. Chairman? We'll, we'll hear from our, the board's engineer, then I'll ask the public for comment, and then you'll have the opportunity to summarize. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Marucci, please.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name for the record.
Anthony Marucci.
Thank you, Anthony.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this application has one variance, uh, which is the side yard. The existing side yard is four point seven feet, and the R1A zone requires six feet. Four point seven feet is an existing condition, and the second floor addition will have the same of four point seven foot setback. Uh, there are no other variances, there is no height variance, um, and there is no rear yard variance. I did have a concern about the wet bar, and that's why I asked for the applicant to testify that this is not going to be a two-family house, and he has testified to that effect, and so I have no other, uh, comments there. This is, this is, um, a second floor addition, so nothing changes with drainage, it's just that one variance.
Richie, do you have any regulations on Juliet-style balconies, like the one proposed, that might come into play?
No. It, it's, it's, it's not a common type of balcony, but if they wanna put a balcony that was four feet in depth, where they could actually walk out into the rear, into the rear yard, is, it, there would be no setback issue, because there's plenty of room in the rear yard.
Mr. Marucci, to you, in, in your professional opinion, do you see any significant impact on, on the sunlight to the, the rich yard at 107 West Passaic?
When, when you use the word significant, I mean, again, there is a, a partial second floor there now, it's going up a, a little higher, but it, it would affect 107, uh, with respect to the rear yard. The, the property at 107 West Passaic, fronts on West Passaic, so that would be their rear yard. Um, but in terms of sunlight, it would be way in the afternoon, based on, on the direction, that it would even affect it, uh, you know, partially.
Mr. Marucci, who else has questions for Mr. Marucci?
I don't see anybody's hands.
Is there any member of the public who has a question?
Can I just ask him the question that I asked my own architect?
Pardon?
Anthony, um, Marucci, whatever concerns of Mr. Shaw, which are understandable, um, as we like to say, if the addition were six feet instead of four point, whatever, four point seven, would that make any difference?
In my opinion, no. If, if, if the addition were, if, if the addition was, if there were six feet, it wouldn't even be before this board, and the applicant can go up to thirty-five feet in height. So, we're not affected in, in, in any way.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Marucci. All right, now we've reached the time for public comment, if there's any member of the public who wishes to be heard, uh, please raise your hand, and you'll be sworn in and allowed to provide testimony.
I'll go, um...
Mr. Shaw's already been, uh, sworn in. Uh, this is the resident, this is the resident from 107 West Passaic Avenue.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Shaw, remember you're...
You're under oath, Mr. Shaw.
Sure, so, um, you know, I would like to, uh, first of all, start off with, if you're gonna, you know, if there's a six foot, six feet back, uh, side yard, uh, you know, requirement, uh, why not follow that and build, you know, if you're gonna really build it, build it, you know, follow, follow, follow what the requirements are? So, that's like first, first comment. Second comment is, is, you know, I'm concerned, uh, about privacy, uh, due to this second floor going up, and, you know, or, you know, basically shadowing my, uh, backyard and my house. Uh, somebody who's sitting, standing in that balcony, gonna be able to see, um, you know, sixty to seventy percent of, of what's going on in my backyard, right? So, I have that privacy, uh, concern, as well as be able to see into my bedroom window, honestly, uh, which I mentioned, you know, uh, from the balcony, as well as from, you know, potentially from these windows, right? So, that's the, the second point. The third point is, if you look at, if anybody looking at this building, right, um, the, the addition that's there in the back was built after the house was built, according to my opinion, because it's behind the garage, right? That's first story that exists, that was built after, after the house was built, because it's behind the garage. Um, you know, I've never seen a house, in my opinion, like I said, that's built brand new with, uh, you know, addition in back of the garage. So, um, you know, and, uh, like I said, I'm just concerned that it doesn't turn into a second family house, because it's, you know, there's already, you know, few bedrooms, um, in the house already, and few bathrooms, and you're adding another living room, and, you know, a couple of bedrooms, you know, bathrooms, so, those are the three points, uh, which I'm concerned about, right? And, uh, you know, I, uh, in publicly say that, I, I, you know, I, I don't agree with this, uh, decision.
Mr. Shaw, is there any other member of the public who wishes to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I, I have a question to Mr. Shaw, if I could. You're, you're on mute, is that okay?
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, Mr. Shaw, a quick question, um, the, that rear addition, um, that you're, that you're speaking about, I, I believe you said you've lived in your house about twenty years now?
Correct.
And was that rear structure there when you purchased, was it already existing when you purchased your house?
Uh, yes, that rear existed, but an entrance was added later on.
And the entrance, the rear entrance to the wet bar?
Yes, with that, yeah.
So, that, so, even twenty years, well, that, that rear addition never met that six-foot setback. I mean, it's, it's been that way for many, many years, apparently.
Correct.
Okay. I, I just wanted to be clear that that extension has not been added...
Correct.
Since you've lived in the house.
Yeah, and, and when I bought the house, I honestly wasn't aware of this six-feet, uh, right, law, right? But if you're gonna build it, in my opinion, just do it right, so it meets that requirement, I mean, that's all.
Oh, it doesn't?
So, yes, I, I agree, and I agree with you, and that's correct.
Which is... I thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have a question, Mr. Shaw as well?
Go ahead.
Mr. Shaw, is, um, um, the current structure that is there, are there windows facing your property now?
Mr. Shaw, you're on mute?
Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw, you're on mute? Can you unmute yourself, that question was to you?
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, so, there is, uh, there is, uh, you know, um, windows that, on the first floor, that's, uh, you know, uh, that's, uh, facing my, uh, backyard.
And the second floor part of the structure, are there windows, active windows, that are actually facing your property as well?
Correct.
There are?
Yes.
So, would, uh, an additional window be that much more of an intrusion?
Uh, I, I, I believe in my opinion, yes, because it's gonna be a bathroom, you know?
Okay.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
All right, all right, well, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? Anyone else wishing, and provide testimony?
I don't see any hands, Chairman.
And no one? Uh, Mr. Sant Ambrosio, your turn, opportunity to summarize, if you wish.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. We really look at these applications, uh, with scrutiny, and that, that's appropriate, and I appreciate it. Uh, I just wanted to say, my client wants to make a substantial, expensive, wonderful improvement to this home. It's unfortunate that when the home was constructed, the lot line was drawn closer than our now ordinance provides, but as Mr. Marucci testified, there's no, um, height variances, where our, our focus essentially is on this side yard setback, and both Mr. Marucci and Mr. Rosado testified, in my opinion, in response to a question, that even if the addition were the full six feet away from the lot line, it wouldn't make any significant difference with the alleged, uh, lack of sunshine reaching Mr. Shaw's yard. So, I hope you will look favorably upon the application.
Eric, uh, time for public care was closed, time for discussion has begun, but who would like to leave discussion?
I'm on mute, Mr. Bellnicki.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, uh, during the application of the variance, um, it's an existing condition, four point seven feet, they're building, um, straight up, uh, in deference to Mr. Shaw, you know, if the new addition were in another foot and a half, they wouldn't be before us, as Mr. Marucci has said. Uh, there's been testimony that the amount of sunlight in that is negligible to be blocked in that, and as for the windows in the bathroom, I believe it's, uh, where they have a jacuzzi tub there, uh, planned, and, uh, three, it looks like a triple window there, uh, I think, um, Mr. Chairman, you brought up the idea that those, uh, windows, uh, uh, could be, uh, frosted, lack of a better word, I think the applicant can go for that. Uh, as far as the Juliet balcony, I have seen in my friend's house that has one, uh, you cannot walk out on it, okay? It's, uh, uh, allows for more light, you know, a, a full French door to come in, and, uh, I don't see, uh, any problem with that unless Mr. Perez is gonna be out on his balcony giving speeches or something like that, okay? Uh, so, uh, those are just my comments on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bellnicki.
Mr. Chairman, um, I, I would like to echo Mr. Bellnicki's points entirely, I, I totally agree with Mr. Bellnicki's points. Um, in addition, I would add that, you know, architecturally, um, and stylistically, the architect has proposed something that is completely in character and consistent with, um, the front, the street-facing side of the house, um, and the fact that although the roofline will be somewhat higher, um, and perhaps larger than what is, is, is existing, um, it will still have some pitch to it. It is still, it, it's a Dutch gamble roof, I think, um, is the term, and so, the amount of sunlight that is blocked, um, and, and the sightlines, I don't think are going to be too much of a negative impact on neighboring properties. I, I think that what it's being proposed here is actually quite attractive, and it will probably add value, significant value to the property in general, and hopefully, the neighboring properties as well.
Yeah, if I may, I, I would just also echo that, Mr. Bellnicki stole most of my thunder as well, uh, but I would say the, um, the bathroom is also on the, the, on the, the side of the house facing closer to the 1, 1 Leo side there. I really don't see it as being an, an actual problem for, for 107 East Passaic. Uh, it's just, uh, it, you know, looking at the, the line on Google Earth, it, it's almost looking like it's almost in, facing that property as well, it's placed as far away as it could be, I think. So, I, I really don't see an issue on my part, from testimony provided.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to speak, board? Hearing no one, I'm taking a mug. You just made it. Hearing no one else requesting the floor, I request a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, if I just may add to my testimony that it was also, uh, testimony was given by everyone that it's not gonna be a two-family, it's not intended to be a two-family, uh, house, uh, in any way also. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Hit a motion then, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'll leave a motion to approve the application.
I'll second it.
Bellnicki, seconds, please, hold on.
Okay. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Bellnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Stivers?
Yes.
Chairman Machowski?
Yes. Application is approved. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you.
You too.
Take a break.
I think we need to let people go home.
I, I don't know how, I mean, what, we got, yeah, we have three applications left, I don't know how much more you think we're gonna get through here.
I'm counting, uh, four left.
No, there's only three, the amended agenda. Yeah, there's an...
Mill Street was adjourned.
All right, I see Montgomery, Eaton, Hoover, and Jacob.
Montgomery was adjourned, that's the old agenda, I sent out amended agendas. Or they didn't, uh, I'm sorry, they weren't adjourned, they didn't advertise. They didn't advertise.
Montgomery?
So we have Eaton Place, Hoover Avenue, and Jacob Street. And we are at ten thirty.
May I ask, uh, forty-four Jacob, we're not likely to get to you this evening. Uh, would you like to adjourn now, or you wanna stick around to the very end?
I believe that's Mr. Babula.
Yeah, we're here.
High line likely we're gonna get to you because there's only a half.
Does that mean-
Uh, twenty-eight minutes left.
So what does that mean? Do we have to wait till August?
Adjourn.
Correct.
Yes. Either that, or you could wait till eleven o'clock and be adjourned, you know, now or then.
So that, you're telling me we're adjourned no matter what?
Not gonna get to you this evening, it's not possible. So you can stick around to the very ends and see if everyone else, uh, fails to show up, or you can adjourn now.
Pointing.
Why don't you wanna wait to the end?
I mean-
We've been sitting here since seven o'clock.
Yeah, we've been here, sitting here since six thirty anyway. I guess we'll just wait.
All right, thank you. Uh, I'll ask the same question of four hundred Hoover Avenue. Not likely we'll get to you this evening, being that there's only now seven minutes left. Do you wish to, uh, adjourn now, or stick around to the very end?
Good evening, Christopher Quinn, here at the Department of the Aplicent. Um, the one, two questions I have is just, can you verify that the Eaton Place application is actually here? And the president is proceeding?
Ask him, Eaton Place, are you here?
We are here.
Okay.
And you will be, you will be ready to succeed tonight?
Yes, that's correct.
Uh, and and the next question I have, the board, I know we're in the summer months, with the board reworked, they're giving a special meeting. And this board, this is the project recovery, so we, to improve recoveries in the area and provide one-on-one service. I I know the 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 challenge is just to schedule everything else, I said, I know that things-
Right, that's not something we can figure out at this meeting. That's the problem, is I would need to pull the board for a special meeting.
Board, the the board's willing to entertain special meetings, you, of course, would have to pay for it, and, uh, it would take us some effort to to determine what the possible dates are. Right, we couldn't do it.
Okay, well, um, I guess I would ask that we be carried to August nineteenth, and that we also request a special meeting, if the board can give us the date earlier than that, we will renotice and attend the meeting earlier.
Okay, just to be clear, as-
Um, they will not, they will not be able to get a special meeting before that, that's for sure.
Okay, that that's what I just wanted to verify.
It would be later than that. Do you still wish just to look for a special meeting date?
No, we'll, we'll, no, that board, Mr. Chairman, is carrying to the August nineteenth.
All right, and you're away of time constraints?
Uh, yes, we're next meeting.
Um, board, any discussion?
Chairman, you're on mute.
All right.
I'm sorry.
I know.
Okay.
Uh, board, may I have?
I'll I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. Your date.
What's August nineteenth?
Correct.
Very good.
Would you, would you wish to report?
All right, no additional notice required. Uh, is there a member of the public here for this tonight? One, board, uh, we have, uh, we have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone, anyone opposed? Hearing no one opposed, uh, four hundred Hoover is adjourned to August nineteenth at seven P M. No further notice is required.
I'm ready, man. Thanks.
Take care. All right, that brings us to six F, application of Robert Beaton as owner for both variances and any such other relief. As may be required from the zoning ordinance attached, we're moving to expand the driveway in residential. One family, R one A, so on a premises known as after four block nine thirty, four lot sixty-seven, but known as eighty-two Eaton Place. Uh, is the applicant here this evening? I heard someone speak, is that the applicant?
Yes, that's me, Robert Beaton.
Are you representing yourself, sir?
Yes, sir.
Where am I, please?
Okay, Mr. Beaton, raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Just state your name for the record.
Robert Beaton.
Thank you.
All right, sir, could you please describe what you propose to do? What variances are required, and the justification for this?
Absolutely, thank you so much for hearing my, uh, my application tonight. Uh, my wife and I are seeking a variance to extend our driveway, um, which is currently ten feet, um, to twelve feet wide onto our property, so we're not impact, uh, our neighbors going in front of our house. Pre-existing driveway already exists, uh, in front of our house, and this suggests extending it widthwise. We're gonna leave our curb cut the same. Uh, the rationale for this is we moved into this house in August with a driveway that could accommodate one car. Um, at this time, we have two cars that we can tightly squeeze in, realized over the winter. Um, but it's not, uh, it's not really long enough to accommodate both of our cars. Um, on our street, we are allowed to park on the street, but because we're a corner lot, um, sitting next to cul-de-sac, our house is right, right at the apex of a blind corner, so we don't feel comfortable parking our car in front of our house. We actually park it in front of a neighbor's house, or if they park their car in front of their house, um, we'll be like fifty to a hundred yards down, uh, into Eaton Place, further down the neighborhood. Um, this is becoming a concern for us, um, because of the safety, uh, ourselves, having two dogs, transporting dogs back and forth. Uh, and also to speak candidly, as my wife and I pursue family planning, we recognize that we're going to have our in-laws coming and staying with us. We're going to have children needing to have more car access, and it's advantageous for us to be able to have two cars within the driveway as we have people come and visit, help us take care of our children, um, as well as just for the future when we, uh, actually transport our children back and forth. Uh, I should say at this point, um, I guess we're not looking to extend the curb cut, and based off my calculations, uh, that were put into the application, this would, uh, have minimal impact to repermeation, um, proportionality of the yard.
And so the variances you need are for, uh, does the driveway exceed twenty-two feet when you, with the prop, uh, expansion, or not?
No, the driveway would be at twenty feet. And if, this would not impact, um, the apron or the curb cut. We recently had those done.
And the driveway does not lead to garage, is that correct?
Uh, the driveway does lead to a garage. It's an attached garage on the side of the house, and the driveway is pre-existing into the garage.
All right.
Excuse me.
So there's space in the garage, and once you're proposing, there's an existing almost two spaces, and you're proposing two spaces with the expansion, is that correct?
Yeah, I believe so, I'm sorry, I think I cut out a little bit. So right now, we're at one car width, um, with maybe a foot on each side, we're right at ten feet. And the proposal was to take it twelve to twenty feet, so we could have two cars next to each other in the driveway.
And one car in the garage, is that correct?
Uh, the garage is is being used for alternative space right now. It's because of the width of our cars, um, we can't comfortably fold the cars into the driveway, into the garage, excuse me, um.
So you would say that the garage is obsolete for the current day cars? That's the one, one reason why you need to have two spaces in the driveway in front of the garage?
I I would, I'd push that, yeah, I'd say Subaru, so we have a Subaru and a Volkswagen, and they both have extended mirrors on the side. Um, so for us to pull our cars into the driveway, through our garage, excuse me, we have to fold the mirrors down, and it takes two people to maneuver the car in, to make sure that we don't hit.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, are there questions for the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Oh, sorry, thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Wagner. Uh, Mr. Beaton, um, the, you propose to put your addition in in front of your entrance to the house, correct?
Yes, sir.
Um, what kind of, uh, protection are you planning to assure that the vehicle does not intrude through your front door?
That's a fantastic question. Um, we have a raised step that protrudes, a pre-existing step, I should say, protrudes, I believe, three feet out, and one foot high, roughly, I'm sorry, I don't know the exact measurements. Um, and they are stone, um, uh, it's a, I believe it's a cinder block base, and then a blue stone on top of that. Um, so thinking of that as acting as as a concrete curb, a similar effect.
How much of a slope is your current driveway? Uh, I I know there's a hill there to, you know, coming up, uh, the other part of Eaton, but how much does your driveway slope towards the house, or away from the house?
Um, it slopes towards the house, unfortunately, I don't know the degree of dimensions. Um, but if if there's a concern on there, we can absolutely, uh, rescale the yard to to meet requirements. We could work with engineering department to figure out what those requirements would be.
I just, um, that that is a concern of mine, but I do not know the, uh, the, the codes, you know, in terms of, uh, what Mr. uh, engineering, as to how you would handle a sloping driveway towards the front door. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Question, Mr. Chairman? Uh, Mr. Beaton, the, based on the original diagram that was provided, and the, um, it looks like the curb cut was to be extended, is that now no longer the case, based on, on the engineering report?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
All right. Um, and my other question is just because a similar application came upon this board a few months ago, uh, just on the same block, actually, and it had the same concerns with parking in the, in the front entrance of the house. Uh, the solution in that case seemed to be that to use the property line to the other side. Is that an oppo, is there an opportunity to to leverage that in this case, to avoid, um, having, having either too much or having any driveway in front of the entrance of the house?
Uh, my concern there is, I guess I have two concerns there, that, uh, would would give me and my, my wife pause. Uh, one would be the, uh, the sharpness of the curve, and the fact that the curve comes around as it's going up though, creates a blind spot. Um, people use that neighborhood to cut through the broad watch-hung Lake, so lots of times, a lot of people are either taking that curve very quickly, or taking that curve very tight. Um, actually, just recently, there was a case of a car going the wrong way up that street, pinballing off of several parked cars on that street, like on Eaton going into Donna.
Can I just interject for one second? I I just wanna make sure I'm talking about the same thing. Um, 'cause if, you're looking at moving the, extending the driveway closer to that curb, if I'm understanding correctly. So you would be, your car would actually be closer to the curb, so if you're pulling out, wouldn't that increase your your blind spot to that turnaround? I'm I'm talking about the other direction, moving, extending the driveway away from the curb, so that you're actually, your car would be further, when you're pulling out further from there.
All right, understand, my, yes, sir, my apologies. Um, we're, we're not, uh, going to be changing the curb cut, and the rationale for not going further away is based off of the property line. We're already within, I believe, twenty-five inches of our neighbor's line. Um, so we could move it, but it would have minimal effect.
Okay, I'm showing six feet here, which is, which is actually the, I I believe is the setback, but I was just trying to see here. I'll I'll wait for Mr. Marucci's testimony.
Hey, I'm, I could be completely wrong on that.
Okay.
Just based off of my visual, uh, mental model of the space.
All right, thank you.
Sir.
Now, I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Beaton, uh, Mr. Beaton, are there, uh, any other neighbors that have, uh, done this to their houses in the neighborhood?
Uh, yes, sir, my, uh, direct neighbor has a two-car driveway, and I believe my wife counted, um, I I don't really give an exact number, over, over half a dozen, if not a dozen. Uh, sorry, I'm getting, I believe, I believe it was over half a dozen other houses within the Donna Eaton Woods.
And how have the, how have they widened their driveways uh, towards the entrance of the house, or did they have the side property to do it?
I believe, um, from a visual inspection of the neighborhood, it appears to be widening, um, with of the driveway. So, not mistaken.
To which way, to the entrance of the house, or to the, uh, side of the house?
Uh, I don't feel like I can comfortably speak to that. I think it's a mix of of the two.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, uh, Mr. Beaton, on, on your drawings here that I'm looking at, it's, I think you you're proposing or estimating that you would be adding approximately ten feet. Um, and it looks like it would, that additional driveway would align pretty closely with your front entrance to the house, correct?
Yes, sir.
'Cause when I look, um, and I, I have to admit, I'm I'm looking at, you know, at the Google satellite view here. Um, it it just looks like that front entrance porch is not anywhere near ten feet. Um, so is that ten feet, is that actually a a pretty close estimate, then? It it looks like it's more like, you know, closer to five feet or so.
Uh, I believe it's closer to ten feet. Um, it would be, it would be in front of, yes, the only way we're extending it is in front of the front door.
So that, so I, um, when I look, it looks like that extension would have to, the width of it would have to not just be in to your front door, it would also be in front of that front picture window, right? So it looks like you have a planter in front of a window next to your door, right?
I, uh, that planter's been removed, I'm I'm aware of the space you're talking about, yeah?
Okay.
Yes.
And so the the driveway would actually extend to, to the end of that point?
Uh, yes, okay, now I know what you're talking about, yes, I I believe that's, that's a good estimation.
Okay, all right, 'cause that's, that's the only way that I can come up with the ten feet.
Yeah. Yeah, you're, you're definitely right, that's the direction we're going, and I believe that's a solid estimation.
Okay, all right. All right, that that answers my question, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Uh, I have another question, in Mr., you saw Mr. Marucci's report? Mr. Beaton?
Yes, uh, yes, sir.
And, uh, um, he, uh, said that the applicant should address the possibility of widening the driveway to the left of the existing driveway towards the side yard, where there's approximately six feet of space. Could you, uh, comment on that?
Yes, um, for, uh, I mean, to be candid, for financial reasons, that initially wasn't thought of, because we would have to remove Belgium block across two sides of the driveway if we wanted to extend it, uh, closer to that side of our neighbor, um, which would be into the the six feet that I believe you're talking about. Um, so, just in terms of planning, we thought, uh, it would be easier just to extend it over the front of our house.
Maybe we'd need a waiver to extend it within five feet of the adjacent property line, so anywhere than it, I believe, no, it's like, like, uh, going twelve, um, you know, basically eleven inches, um, would require a waiver. would require a waiver.
So I guess, Mr. Beaton, I guess your concern is that by extending or widening the driveway to the left, you would essentially, in having to remove the Belgium block, you would really have to widen the driveway on both sides to the left and the right to get your full width that you need.
That's it. That's correct, sir.
Okay.
To be clear, that would be something that we would be open to. It just wasn't something that we considered in our initial plan.
Mr. Beaton, have you considered any other alternative approach, you know, to your off-street parking? Considering the shape and the restrictions you have on the block by its design and also that hill that comes up there, have you considered an alternative approach rather than parking directly in front of the entrance?
Yes, sir. To, like, we've considered several options from the working standard we have now of parking further down the block, which I believe is, excuse me, another board member was referencing earlier with another, another application. So we can park further down the block. We've also looked into renting parking spaces on other blocks. All of them have certain amounts of trade-offs that, you know, didn't seem to be advantageous for us. The concern about just parking further down the block away from the curb is more of impacting other neighbors, keeping more cars on the streets, and then also thinking about family planning down the road, just the impact that would have on letting kids in the house and letting, letting in other cars.
No, I understand that, but my question was more for alternatives on your own property. Alternatives have you considered other than the parking directly in front of your door, a vehicle?
Yes, sir. I misunderstood your question. My apologies. Our only, our only solution that we consider, or I should say, considered two alternatives, the extending the driveway over the front of the door. And then for a short period of time, we looked into selling the older cars to purchase a smaller car that we could use to then store in the garage. But that didn't seem like a solid long-term solution for our family.
Well, not much of a fan of front yard parking, but the constraints that your property has offered you and, you know, the hardship you seem to be expressing, have you considered the parallel front yard parking that would move you away from the front door?
Yes, sir, we've not considered that.
Okay, thank you.
You're on mute, then. Questions for the applicant board? Any member of the public have a question for this applicant?
I don't see any hands.
Beaton, do you have any other witnesses?
Yes, sir.
We will hear from the board's engineer, Mr. Marucci.
Mr. Marucci, raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name for the record.
Anthony Marucci.
Thank you, Ann.
With respect to the ordinance, the ordinance requires that the width of the driveway cannot be more than the width of the garage. So that's what brings this application before the zoning board. I'm pleased that the applicant has not, has decided not to widen the curb cut because that creates another issue. But again, I suggested that maybe utilize the, as you face the house, utilize the side yard to the left, say five feet and then another five feet. Yes, it does require removing the curbing, but the way it's proposed right now, the car would be blocking the front entrance to the house and the board has had applications like this in the past. It's up to the board, but I just have a concern with the car parked directly in front of the entrance to the house in case of an emergency for either, for any safety person to go in or somebody to come out. I just see a concern with having the parking space right in front of the doorway. It's up to the board.
Questions for Mr. Marucci, board?
Mr. Marucci, I have a question. If, would it be any significant issue with the curb cut if a front yard parking was proposed or, you know, considered that would be parallel to the street? Would, in your opinion, would that enable the vehicle to still get out and maneuver its way out without any additional curbing change?
If I understand your question, for the parking spaces to be parallel to the street?
Correct, on the property.
But they would still be, well, first of all, it'd be difficult to maneuver, to make the turns. But it would still be, a parking space would still be eighteen foot in depth. So they would still be in front of the house.
True, but it'll be at least twelve feet or eleven feet, ten feet away from the front of the house, the door.
I see what you're saying, but again, now the car is parked basically in the front yard.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's, I think there's a problem with maneuvering to get the car in and out of that driveway to do that.
Well, it's a Subaru after all, but thank you.
Okay.
Other questions for Mr. Marucci?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one. Didn't we check lot coverage? I know the pool and the whole western yard is impervious, but the pool itself is not counted.
I did, I did, Mr. Rubin. Remember, the pool itself, we don't count.
Correct.
And there's a significant lawn area on the corner. I did a quick calculation. We're under the forty-five percent. This is the R1A zone. We are under the forty-five percent. We're okay. Again, my only concern is
I know whether the train track is pervy, Mr. Rubin, pervy.
You know, I'd like to ask Mr. Beaton on that train track.
That train track has been removed.
Wait, I have to dig it up. I have to. I couldn't find the microphone without raising that. I had no idea what that was.
Before we moved in, there is a massive outdoor train track.
But it's shown on your survey. That's why you said, you said it was removed.
It, yes, that was removed.
Oh, so the quiet over.
Is that garden area now?
It's all, it's just grass at this point, yeah.
I couldn't resist.
Yeah.
I was kind of, at this point, so I might have talked about the train track.
So, Mr. Marucci, a quick question. So if the applicant were to, were amenable to extending the width of the driveway on both sides to the right and the left, and you're suggesting go five feet to the left, he would still be in compliance with the setback from the next property?
Well, yeah, he'd still be on his property, in other words. He has five point nine feet of side yard. So if we use five feet, just so there's no problem with the property line itself, we use five feet and five feet on the other side, I think that's a little better. We've done this in other applications. So the car wouldn't, would not be completely in front of the entrance to the house.
Okay, and what we need a waiver for that, I think, is you're not permitted to park within five feet of a law line.
In our design regulations.
So it's only in a design waiver for being within five feet of the law line.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Does that sound okay, Mr. Beaton? I mean,
Yes, sir, that, I'm sorry, I don't mean to speak over you. Yes, my wife and I would be completely fine with that. We just would need advice on where we get the design waiver from, if we would feel comfortable moving forward with that.
We can get it from us. Great.
I have a question for Mr. Marucci. Mr. Marucci, just to summarize in my brain, so what you're saying is the existing driveway could be expanded five feet to the left, okay? Looking at the house, and then five feet to the right. And that five feet to the right would not be blocking or in front of the front doorway at all. Okay, for the safety issues you stated?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm not so sure I agree that that won't be in front of the front door with five feet to the right.
You know, the problem I have with the application is the survey that was submitted is reduced and it's very difficult to put a scale on it because of the reduction. But again, right now, the application is for ten feet, ten foot widening to the right side, which is completely in front of the entrance. I think five and five would be much better.
Would it be able to even work with less on the right side, say three feet?
I'm trying to remember the last application that the board did and I believe we actually, the board actually approved it at eighteen foot wide. Because that's enough, that's enough for two cars to be parked side by side.
Was that Eaton Place?
That was number seventy-one Eaton Place.
Yeah, and it wasn't in front of the doorway at all, because she had the room to the right. She had the room to the right side of the house.
Well, she had, but she had seven feet on the side.
Right, correct.
Here we're a little, here we're a little less. That's why I say five feet to the left and three to the right, that's eight, and the existing driveway is that, that's eighteen feet. I think that would work.
That would work, okay.
If that's okay with the applicant, I would just make a suggestion.
Yes, sir, we feel comfortable with that.
Thank you, Mr. Marucci.
Restate those dimensions one more time, Mr. Marucci.
According to the applicant, the existing driveway is ten feet wide. So if he's allowed to widen it five feet to the left and three feet to the right, that's another eight feet. That's a total of eighteen feet. I think that would work.
Thank you, Mr. Marucci. And as I understand it, the applicant is agreeable to that. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Marucci?
You're on mute, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I just want to ask Mr. Marucci one other question. Is the expansion of the driveway going to commence at the property line? Or is it going to commence further, deeper into the lot? The one we did at seventy-one, I think that they curved in seventy feet into the lot. The one we just did at twenty, I mean, the one we just did
At seventy-one.
On Arbor Street, right.
On Arbor Street, the depth of the widening was only twenty feet. Here they have, you know, well, they have to shorten because of the curve. So you probably have no choice because of the entranceway.
If you'll allow me, the setback is twenty-seven feet. So that's plenty of room to kind of angle in, if I can show that way. What I would do is work with the applicant and I would make a better sketch than what he had. I'd help him out with that.
Yeah, the concern I have is the front entranceway was raised by a foot. That sticks out three feet. So you're really down to twenty-four feet, where the driveway is going to be expanded on the right. How do I do it with being split on both sides? I don't think you're gonna have to, you can't do it. You're gonna have to do it all the way to the law line if you're doing it on both sides.
I didn't look at it on Google. I don't know, you're saying that the, where the concrete is that's elevated?
Yes, by a foot. He testified to that. Where that little triangle is that comes out in front of the concrete. You see, can you see it?
Yeah, I see it, yeah.
So it's gonna have to stop short of that, that walkway, that entranceway.
But you still have, but you still have a good twenty-four feet. You still
Correct, but remember now you're going on both sides. So how are you gonna curb it for both sides?
Without widening the curb cut, you can still widen from the curb and widen, angle it on both sides.
Okay, then you're gonna desire it and we're gonna say it's gonna be angled on both sides. It's right and it's wrong.
I'll work with the applicant on it. He's the board of plausibility.
By that picture there, it actually looks like the existing driveway is wider than the garage is now.
Do you want me to share again?
The Wagner, do you bring that back?
I'll show her again.
You're our audio video assistant. Our technician. Yeah.
Because it's wider than the garage opening. It's not necessarily wider than the garage.
Right, right.
Two different things.
Right. Again, I'll work with the applicant, no?
Okay.
Any member of the public who wishes would be just more can make a statement.
I need you to take down the, there you go. I don't see any hands. That's okay. I don't see any hands, Chairman.
Yeah. Mr. Beaton, you have the opportunity to summarize if you wish.
Yes, sir. I don't have anything else to say.
All right, the public hearing is closed. Board, discussion please. You lost your microphone, Chairman. Questions, please, board?
I'll go first. Right after that, I'm not a fan of front yard parking, okay? And especially even if it's in front of the front of the doorway, all right? If Mr. Marucci works with the applicant and they expand it to the left side and the total expansion is no more than eighteen feet, then I, you know, I would think more positive on this, okay? But I would have liked to seen a better survey so Mr. Marucci could make his calculations for us to be more exact. I don't like doing things where we don't know exactly what's going on, especially with this type of situation, since we seem to be getting more and more of these.
Mr. Belnicki, anyone else?
I'll add something. Mr. Chairman, I'll add something. I just don't think that we should expand it at all. I think we should just deny it. I'm just not persuaded of a need and I don't like the front yard parking.
Mr. Chairman, I'll comment. I think I would echo Mr. Belnicki's points that I am agreeable to expanding the driveway so that it is no more than eighteen feet wide. And that assumes that we utilize at least five foot on the left side of the driveway. You know, there certainly is precedence on this board to, you know, provide some additional parking space. I'm not a fan of front yard parking either, but, you know, the alternative for this applicant along with others that we've had is to park the car on the street. And I don't know that we necessarily And I don't know that we necessarily want to encourage that as well. And this is a fair compromise.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Johnson, anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I agree, I agree too with Mr. Belmicki and Mr. Johnson. I did take a right up there and I did come whipping around that curb, not very fast, but I had to in order to get up that hill, and I was quite surprised to find myself right there. So I do understand Mr. Beaton's concern for it, and therefore I would be, I'm not a fan as well of front yard parking, but I do believe this is a hardship case in this case, and I think we should allow it.
Anyone else? Anyone else speak? The discussion board? Who is that? This, this someone? No?
No.
If there are no one else, I'll let you take them up.
I'll make a motion to approve the application with the conditions stated. Do we need to state those conditions?
I thought expansion to the left as we looked at the front pass.
No more than 18 feet wide?
No more than 18 feet wide at all, and the applicant should work with Mr. Marucci to obtain a overall successful solution.
Right.
Just a second, right? Second, Chairman, I'll second that. Have you dropped on mute? Please follow the board.
Sure. Ms. Brown?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Belmicki?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Stivers?
Yes.
Chairman Machowski?
Yes, the application is approved, yes amended. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Back to 44 Jacob Street.
Yes.
Any folks still? To
Yes, we're here.
19th meeting.
He asked if you're
It's running to August 19th at 7:00 PM.
Okay. With no renotice?
Correct.
No, no renotice is required if you waive time constraints.
Yeah.
Time constraints required.
Yes.
Thank you. May I have motion, board? If there's no discussion, adjourn 44 Jacob Street, 19th, 7:00 PM, no further notice required.
No move, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it.
Mr. Belmicki, seconds. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Say aye. Anyone opposed? I hear no one opposed. 44 Jacob is adjourned till August 19th, 7:00 PM. Any further business tonight, board?
Nope, just getting home in the, in the monsoon.
There is no one that has a motion to adjourn meeting.
Thank you, everyone. Stay safe.
I'll make that motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, that was Mr. Johnson, Mr. Prince. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? We hear no one opposed? No one is opposed. We are adjourned. Good night, everyone. Thank you very much.